Technology, specialist medical clinics, pharmacies and modern retirement homes. But it is beyond staying healthy. We want to use health as the catalyst for creating a healthy economy. We intend to link healthcare with tourism and agriculture. Taking advantage of our therapeutic environment and positioning our island is not only a place that offers top-notch care and medical procedures, but as a rejuvenation destination and a producer of bespoke medical products with our herbs and spices.
Energy. Imagine a Grenada whose energy sector is aptly diversified to take full advantage of our elements, turning our seasons of sunshine, coastal breeze and the geothermal energy into electricity to propel our homes and economy. Our vision is practical: reduce our dependence on fossil fuels. This goes beyond the illustrious dream of saving the planet. It's more personal. We want to make life easier for our citizens. A diversified energy sector allows our people to do more. And when our people do, Grenada grows. Our aim by 2035 is to reduce our dependence on fossil fuels by forty percent. The effects of this transition will be felt by every Grenadian. Imagine hotels operating with reduced electricity costs, businesses, schools, hospitals. The spill-off effects are immeasurable. Imagine our burgeoning agro-processing industry finally able to thrive. Imagine regular Grenadians with more disposable income all because of lower electricity costs.
Agriculture. A nation must be able to feed itself. Economic development is important, but it is impossible without food security. Our vision includes the revival of our agricultural sector. Imagine a Grenada able to support its citizens with local produce. Imagine a Grenada that imports less. A Grenada with our spices replanted and production restored to pre-hurricane Ivan levels by 2035 and 2045 respectively. Imagine a Grenada where we end the exportation of raw nutmegs and cocoa and we convert all nutmegs, maces, paracarbs and cocoa into processed and manufactured food, spices, condiments and chocolates. Imagine a Grenada that meets the demand for fresh locally-produced chicken and end our dependence on imported chicken by 2040. A Grenada where our sons and daughters...
Honorable Deacon Mitchell, Prime Minister of Grenada. Honorable Delma Thomas, Minister for Mental Health, Wellness and Religious Affairs. Senator the Honorable Gloria Thomas, Minister for Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs. Senator the Honorable David Andrew, Minister for Education. Other Cabinet Ministers, Government officials, residents, online viewers. Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our second town hall meeting held right here in Big Parish, St. Andrew. Let us all stand as we begin this evening's proceedings with opening prayers which will be led by Aaron Francois, Permanent Secretary in the Ministry of Education.
Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege that you have given to us that we can assemble here today for this town hall meeting. We thank you for our beautiful country, Grenada, and its people. We thank you, Father, that we can come before you because we acknowledge you as the head of our lives and the head of our country. God, we commit this meeting to you as the government and the people come together to discuss matters concerning national development. And Father, we pray, God, that our discussions will be fruitful. Lord God, that the government will clearly articulate what it has and what it projects to do. The people, citizens of the country would ask the questions that they need answers to, Lord. And Father, we pray that everything will go in order and that you would be pleased with each one of us, that we would conduct ourselves in a good manner. So we thank you and we ask your divine presence with us. We ask that you would guide us and that you would bless each one of us. In Jesus' precious name we pray.
Thank you, PS. Please remain standing as we invite two young students from the Harper Music Services to play for us the National Anthem. Thank you. Kenrick Harper and your students, young musicians, Keniel Harper and Xavier Thomas. Let's give them another round of applause. From the Harper Music Services, you may have your seats. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to extend my gratitude to all of you for coming out this evening to our second town hall meeting to mark government's second year in office. We want to thank you immensely for demonstrating your commitment to your community and to your country and for your desire to engage in issues that matter to all of you. This town hall meeting this evening serves as an important platform for open dialogue where you, the residents, can voice your concerns, share your ideas and ask questions about the matters that affect you, the constituents, and of course, Grenada, Karakoo and Pity Martinique. This is also an opportunity to come together, to listen to one another and to work collaboratively towards a better Grenada. I would like to acknowledge the hard-working team to our Prime Minister and his Cabinet of Ministers. Let's give them a round of applause. They are focused on transforming Grenada, Karakoo and Pity Martinique. And this evening, our team will provide updates on projects and initiatives in their constituencies and respective ministries. So without further ado, I would like to introduce to you the Minister with Responsibility for Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs to make the first presentation. Let us welcome Senator the Honorable Gloria Thomas.
Thank you, Madame MC, Honorable Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell, colleague ministers at the head table, other dignitaries in the audience or PSS, special invited guests. Pleasant good evening to all. It is my distinct pleasure to just share with you some of the achievements over the last two years as Minister for Social and Community Development, Housing and Gender Affairs. As you all know, we campaign on a transformation agenda. So one of my main tasks when I was assigned to the Ministry of Social Development was to get my team to start thinking outside the box so we will be able to achieve our transformation agenda. Gender-based violence is an issue of major concern. In light of this, we saw it necessary to bring all the stakeholders together, the police, health, social and the justice sectors, to discuss and agree on a national standard operating procedure. It was launched in December 2022 and it guided the response. It was aimed to guide the response of the sectors in a more collaborative and coordinated way when addressing gender-based violence. Prior to that, the police had its own approach. Social development had its own approach. And there was a lot of overlapping and confusion. So sometimes when a woman experiences domestic violence, she goes to the police. She has to give a certain information. Then she comes to social development. We have to do another part of it and we have to ask her the same question the police ask her. And that was just creating further abuse to the woman. We say secondary wounding. So we had to come together and we saw it necessary. So we came together and put this procedure in place. And so all the stakeholders came together. They were trained. We had a consultant doing the training. And the operating procedure was set in stage for the institutionalization of sub-national and national coordinating mechanisms. So this is one of the main achievements for the ministry as it relates to gender-based violence. We also established a men's bureau. We had a men's desk at the ministry which was upgraded to men's bureau. And that was based on the premise that traditional programmatic approaches generally overlooked the needs and interests of men. So we set out to bring the balance, to ensure that men's need and concerns can be adequately addressed. So now we have a men's bureau and that helped with the capacity to respond to the needs of men. In November 2023, Grenada hosted the first international Men's Day Regional Conference under the theme "Men Matters: Embrace, Empower, Elevate for Transformation." The intention is to establish a Caribbean network to improve our programmatic responses for addressing the issues commonly faced by men. We wanted to ensure that men are not left behind. So apart from the bureau, we also hosted the first regional men's conference here in Grenada. And I think we deserve a round of applause for that. National standards for the elderly. The Grenada National Standards for Residential Care Facilities for older persons has been developed in collaboration with Parho. The standard covers guidelines and directives for the effective and safe operation of elderly care homes and also care at their residential homes. This was necessary because there was a number of reports of elder abuse and the conditions under which they live needed to be checked on. National policy for elder person. The statistics show that older persons are increasingly being abused. So the national... In Grenada. Law reform. Under the Spotlight Initiative, a legislative assessment led to the development of a legislative reform agenda geared towards improving our systemic approaches to address inequalities, gender-based violence and family issues. The proposed suit of bills, carried for amendment, include Marriage Amendment Bill 2021. We believe that if we have the regulations in place, we'll be more effective in what we do. Marriage Specialising Amendment Regulations 2021. Employment Amendment Bill 2021. Domestic Violence Amendment Bill 2021. Criminal Procedure Code Criminal Procedure Inquiry Bill. Protection of Witnesses Commencement Order 2021. Interstate Amendment Bill 2021. National Insurance Amendment Bill 2021. National Insurance Benefit Amendment Regulations 2021. So as you see, there is a number of regulations that we have to adjust to make things more effective. Multi-hazard plan. The ministry has completed a multi-hazard disaster emergency plan. It is a policy and procedure document to be used in event of disasters and emergencies which have an effect on the lives of individual groups, communities and the nation as a whole. This plan provides a guide for action and set out policies and procedures for the management of disasters, emergencies, response. In March 2023, the ministry conducted the first digital arena exposition at the Grenada Trade Centre. The positive outcome from this initiative, sales of innovative products by young women have increased as a result of this exposition. Exhibitors and the participants appreciated the opportunity to interface with the Prime Minister, ministers and other members of parliament. Some exhibitors used the opportunity to network with fellow young women and entrepreneurs. Exhibitors have expressed appreciation for this opportunity to share their talent and would appreciate more similar engagements. Investment forum. The ministry, in collaboration with the Food and Agricultural Organization and the UN Women Multi-Country Office, hosted the first investment forum with a focus of bridging the systemic gaps between women, youth and the investment world. The specific areas focused were agribusiness, fisheries, tourism and the care sector. This initiative was inspired by the fact that it is extremely difficult for underprivileged groups to access startup capital to compete in the entrepreneurial arena. Development of a mentorship program. The National Harnessing Youth Potential for Excellence, IPE, was developed around the context of providing alternative adult support and guidance to children in conflict with the law. The vision is that through the mentor-mentee relationship, mentors will focus with foster positive behaviors which will facilitate mentees' transition from exhibiting deviant behaviors to fulfilling their true potential. The Multipurpose Center for Persons with Disabilities. The ministry, in its process of establishing the first climate smart, capacity building and livelihood training multipurpose center for persons with disability, has moved forward in identifying the location for that building. The architectural drawings were completed and the land selection site was approved by Cabinet. Disability Assessment. A disability assessment was done in 2023. It utilized a framework which explored the fears of international of interaction in which people with disability may engage, including family, community and the support mechanism provided at the institutional level. Employment, community participation awareness and inclusion are represented in the framework. The disability assessment is providing context for the development of a disability assessment which is currently being developed. Launch of the 2024 Gender-Based Violence Strategy. A national strategy to address gender-based violence was launched and it aimed at achieving the following objectives: to raise awareness of the impact of gender-based on the individual, family, community and society; debunk myths and address the root causes of GBV; raise awareness of the law and resources available to address gender-based violence; engage men and boys as agents of change; strengthen support system by identifying potential change agents within the communities known as gatekeepers to ensure sustained engagement. The government, since taking office, focused on bettering the lives of our citizens and improving the working conditions of our workers. A review of salaries of workers in the social and community development, housing and gender affairs were undertaken. It was revealed that workers were underpaid and did not receive an increase in some sectors for some time. So areas like the SEDAS Home, Grand Baccalaureate Treatment Centre, these two entities were given additional were given additional subvention to ensure that their workers could be better remunerated. Retroactive payment of salary was made to staff in the tune of... Sorry, retroactive payment of salary was made to staff of the Grand Baccalaureate Juvenile Centre in the sum of $376,703. Project 500. Project 500 embodies a visionary initiative to introduce affordable housing solutions to our citizens, catering to varying levels of persons in the tri-island state. We advocate for the adoption of the advanced construction method that prioritizes safety, enhances the skill sets... Let me take over that, please. We advocate for the adoption of advanced construction methods that prioritize safety while empowering both our women and men to enhance their skill sets within the construction sector. As part of Project 500, the inaugural phase, we are commencing the rollout at Phase One and Two sites situated at Dunfamli in St. Andrew. Phase One will witness the construction of seventeen homes open for public viewing, allowing a community to actively participate in the decision-making process regarding the preferred housing option. SEED. A total of 7,914 persons are currently receiving the SEED conditional cash transfer. Over a total of 2,975 beneficiaries benefited from the SEED reform as of January 1st, 2024. The reform targeted beneficiaries on the SEED program who received an increase of $200 to a maximum of $700 per household. Persons who fell under the category of the disabled, mentally ill and so on was considered. And we also... As a ministry, we also did some assessment or reassessment of some of the persons receiving the SEED and we did a little adjustments in the list of persons. Just skipping. Parenting. We have upscaled the parenting program over the last two years and we are now more into the community, meeting the needs of parents. We have the Wash Program going on and we'll be moving into the different constituencies, selecting a special community to deal with the program. We are hoping that by 2027 that every boarding Grenada will have access to bathroom and toilets inside and will be able to get rid of the toilets, the latrine on the outside. There is much more, but it seems it is standing up, so I stop here. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, for updates within your ministry, Ministry of Housing, Community Development and Gender Affairs. Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to introduce a special lady. And remember, we're here in Big Parish. And I want to introduce a special lady. She will be representing St. Andrew at the Miss Grenada Carnival Pageant come August 8th. So let us welcome, she will introduce herself to you, St. Andrew. She goes by the name Kenya Alexander and she is your delegate for Carnival Pageant, August 8th.
Good evening, everyone. I am Kenya Alexander, your representative for the Big Parish, St. Andrew, at this year's National Carnival Queen Pageant. I would just like to encourage each and every one of you to join me on my exquisite journey to majestic Thursday because this year, the big parish will make history. Thank you.
This year, all the parishes might make history. We have St. David, we have... Who else is here? St. Patrick, Karakoo is in the building, St. Mark. St. George is also in the building. So Kenya, we want to wish you all the best in this year's pageant. We want to congratulate you on your journey and it is an important journey. And I'm glad you were able to join us, you were able to join us this evening. And of course, your voice is also... We're looking forward to hear your voice a lot more. And thank you for joining the conversation. And thank you, guys, for coming out. The numbers are encouraging. And I know there are a lot of people on the outside. They also want to view. Remember, we are live on GIS Channel 22. So those of you listening on home, please share the live. This is an important discussion and we want all of you involved. Ladies and gentlemen, our next presentation will be done by the Honorable Delma Thomas, Minister for Mental Health, Wellness and Religious Affairs.
Prime Minister, the most honorable Deacon Mitchell, other members of the head table, ladies and gentlemen.
ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant good evening to every one of you. Good evening. Today, we are celebrating two years of progress, the NDC team united in service. Ladies and gentlemen, I am proud to be a part of a team that can report significant development for the people over the last two years. Over one year ago, I took a leap of faith to join what was then described as a rookie team that would not last a year and a half. I am pleased to report that this so-called rookie team is not only celebrating two years, strong, committed to Grenada's future, but has also accomplished what the safer and most experienced hands could not do in over twenty years. The people of Saint Andrew Northwest can proudly see that they are experiencing the successes of this government. I'd like to take a moment to reflect on our journey and look ahead to the future as it relates to people's development in the constituency of Saint Andrew Northwest. I'd like to focus on some key areas. Education. Education is what will get us out of poverty, and so when it comes to education, I'm big on that. Education is at the heart of our vision for a brighter future. One of our proudest achievements of the government has been the introduction of the free tuition assistance for students at Tamsisi and Newlo, and that has impacted the young people of Saint Andrew Northwest in a positive way. The introduction of free tuition assistance have removed a significant financial barrier for many students in our community. It has allowed more young people, regardless of economic background, to access higher education. Empowering students by enabling access to higher education, we are empowering our youth to the knowledge, skills they need to thrive in today's competitive world. Transformative impact. We say transformation, and if this is not transformation, then I do not know what is. The initiative is not just about numbers, it's about transforming lives. It has opened doors of opportunity that were previously closed to many, ensuring that talent and potential are not yet unrealized. And so brothers and sisters, you may hear that we had programs before that provide tuition assistance to Tamsisi, it was subjective in nature. It means, that means that somebody had to decide who get and who are left out. This program is transformation because all students across Saint Andrew Northwest, across Saint Andrew, and across Grenada can now access free tuition assistance. Brothers and sisters, we are working tirelessly to improve the education opportunities for our people. And for the, as the minister, as the representative for Saint Andrew Northwest, I have been working with the schools in my constituency for the last eleven years, and so we have an open door policy. You can call me anytime when it comes to issues that confront the school and students in the constituency, understanding that only through education, we can truly get our people out of poverty, not through handouts. And what we are giving is hand up. This year, we are expanding our support. Over the years, we have provided, as the representative in Saint Andrew Northwest, work along with the primary school in the constituency, during the CPEA exams, to ensure that we provide support to all the students. And so the person who did the best, every year, we gave financial reward. This year, we are adding someone from each of the primary schools. So we gave one over the years, this year, one from each of the primary school. We have three primary schools physically in the constituency, but Saint Matthew's RC, while physically not in the constituency, our children from Beauregard, Bruges, Montlong, Adelphi, they are attending, so this is our school too. So they will be involved in what we're doing to provide support for the children within our constituency. We have worked to provide infrastructural development in the school, and just recently, the principal of the violent RC, Saint Michael's RC, reported there was an issue there where a child fell, and so she indicated that they needed some railing. We were able to promise and kept a promise by providing railings to the Saint Matthew's RC school. Brothers and sisters, we had a program before, a breakfast program in the primary school, and so for the last two or three years, it had stopped. Come September, we will be relaunching that breakfast in the primary school. So we have free food in the school, we have tuition, free tuition, and now we are launching this breakfast program that will enable our children to attend school on a daily basis. We are not hindering when it comes to education. Brothers and sisters, healthcare. Our government has made significant strides to enhance the services as it relates to healthcare. And as you know, the Princess Alice Hospital is in Maribor, so therefore, I want to speak particularly to that. Staffing, recently, they have eight house officers and one registry is the most amount of house officer we have had in Maribor for a long time, and so we must commend the government. We have initiated an internal medicine clinic every Tuesday restarting with the OB-GYN clinic, which has been crucial in improving women's access to health services, and this will be in Maribor and also in General Hospital. Specialized care, starting in July, the government is launching an adult sick cell clinic to better care for patients with sick cell disease. This clinic aimed to reduce hospital admission and complications, ensuring better outcomes for those affected. We know that there are many people, many young people with sick cells in Saint Andrew, and so we know the issues as it relates to sick cell. I do not want to speak of it and get emotional here this evening, but better provision will be made to assist those with sick cell. We are continuing to work to improve the health services, and so we know that while we have the infrastructure and machines in Maribor, we have an issue as it relates to technician, and government is committed to getting the right technician to be at Maribor, and so it's a work in progress, but we are committed as a government to improving the healthcare of our people in Saint Andrew. Youth and community engagement. Engaging our youth and fostering community spirits are fundamental to a vision for vibrant future. Supporting youth in sports. As your representative, I am committed to supporting our young people in sports, providing financial and moral support. This includes sponsorship to teams, organizing tournaments, ensuring our youth have the resources they need to excel, developing our playing facilities, and to this end, very soon, the people of Balthazar, you will have a real lighted playing field. Mountain, yours is coming soon in terms of the rehabilitation, the light will be there soon, and we have two new fields will be added this year. We have Maribor, the pole is already there, and we have the one close to the Saint Mary's RC school. We believe in our young people, and so we'll continue to do what it takes to develop the sporting facilities across the constituency and by extension, across the parish and across Grenada Karakoo and Pity Martinique. Promoting active lifestyle. Through sports and recreational activities, we are promoting active lifestyle among our youths, fostering camaraderie and healthy competition. Agriculture and rural development. Saint Andrew is the breadbasket of Grenada, and as a government, we continue to work with our farmers. We have the farm labor program going on in the constituency of Saint Andrew Northwest, and I know it's happening all over Saint Andrew. We are also looking at ways to improve farm roads, and we know we have the Bel Air, we have the Clabony Road, which we had some holdup there because of some issues, but we will deliver on those promises as a government. We are committed to ensuring that we provide access to our farmers, and not only access, but provide support to our farmers so that we can feed our families and we can provide and sell produce and provide employment opportunities, not only for the older farmers, but encourage more farmers to get involved in agriculture. Elderly care. Our elderly citizens have made significant strides in the development of this beautiful tri-Island State, and as a government, we continue to provide support. You know, the last time I was walking in one of the villages in my constituency, and an old lady who lived with her husband said, you know I'm getting seven hundred dollars now? And brothers and sisters, we need to let people know that, because sometimes, we only hear we took out one fifty, but are you aware that people who are getting five hundred are not getting seven? So you need to know that, and you need to spread the message that we have increased the support for elderly and for our disabled. This is a government that don't speak about care, but they show that they care. We continue to provide support for elderly who cannot take care of themselves, so we have seen increase in elderly care, increase in caregivers going from house to house, looking after the elderly in the constituency of Saint Andrew Northwest. And so we care. When you talk about care, this is the government that care. We continue to provide support for everyone, so the farmers, our teachers, our elderly citizens, our young people, will continue to look for ways and means to improve the support for the people within Saint Andrew Northwest and by extension, Grenada Karakoo and Pity Martinique. Let me speak briefly on the ministry that I was given in January of 2024 this year, the Ministry of Mental Health, Wellness, and Religious Affairs. The establishment of a dedicated ministry for mental health in Grenada marks a significant step towards prioritizing the well-being of our citizens. There is no health without mental health, and so you must commend this government, because we don't only talk the talk, but we work the work, and that is why a ministry was set up to ensure that we look after the needs of people with mental health issues, and to ensure that we work with families and to do what it takes to protect our people. Comprehensive support. This initiative will provide comprehensive support for mental health issues, ensuring that every citizen has access to the necessary services and resources. Reducing stigma, and I can write a whole book about that. By promoting awareness and education, and that's what we aim to do, to reduce stigma associated with mental health challenges, fostering a more supportive and understanding community. So we are not only dealing with people who comes to Monge Hospital, but we are going out in the community and meet them in their homes. We are also meeting with their families, and so we will be launching massive programs across Grenada, providing education to communities, providing education to families, and providing the necessary support when it comes to mental health issues. Brothers and sisters, we have started with the police and the nurses, so we had a number of training for them because they are the frontline workers. In July, we will be going to the schools and provide mental health training for the children. We are doing most of the schools, I think, in Saint Andrew, some in Saint George's, but we will be doing every school. So we're starting with the secondary school, we will be doing the primary school, we'll be doing the villages, and so we are ensuring that we deal with the issue of mental health, the issue of stigma and discrimination. Brothers and sisters, it is not a secret that alcohol and drug abuse addiction is a problem in Grenada. But we hear about care and who don't care. Twenty years ago, Carlton Home was destroyed by Hurricane Ivan. Nothing was not done in terms of seriously addressing the issue. So if we're talking care, this is the government that care. The rookie government is the government that cares, because I want to say to you, brothers and sisters, we are completing our design, we have already identified, so that center will be located in Maribor in the constituency of Saint Andrew Northwest, so it's not going to only provide rehabilitation, but some people will be able to find a job there. So we, brothers and sisters, this is a government that seriously cares about the people. We don't only talk, but we show action. We have also provide training for faith-based organization, and so I want to place on record our thank you to those in the diaspora who have given us experts who are assisting us over the next couple of weeks, started last week, in providing training for faith-based organization, the leaders, recognizing the importance of faith-based support in recovery. We are also implementing training programs that engage local faith communities in supporting individuals on their journey to recovery. Education and wellness initiative. While we talk mental health, we have to talk holistic health. We have to eat right, we have to exercise, we have to have a healthy mind, a healthy body, and so over the next couple of months, we will be promoting healthy mind, healthy body. And so we are saying to you, let's not eat all these amount of fried foods, let's do certain things in moderation. We know you like somebody, the fast food on the street, but let's do more home, let's try to use our backyards and plant our Kalalu drain and utilize our fruits and fresh fruit, we have a lot of mangoes in season now, and vegetables. Let us look at holistic wellness as our people, because we want to ensure that when you have a healthy mind, you have a healthy body, you take care of yourself, and so we'll be launching, we already started the negotiation in terms of having fitness centers, and I'm not talking about buildings, but using, utilizing playing fields where people can exercise, where you can get healthy initiative, and so we are working together with the Grenada Food and Nutrition Council, promoting a healthy lifestyle. Brothers and sisters, the National Democratic Congress government is a government that cares. We have seen in two years what this government has done, and so we have three more in this term to see what we can do, but we have many, many more years to come under this administration. In conclusion, our journey over the past two years has been defined by tangible progress and transformative initiatives aimed at improving the quality of life for all residents of Saint Andrew Northwest and by extension, Grenada. As we look ahead, we remain committed to building on these achievements, addressing new challenges, and creating opportunities for every individual to thrive in a supportive and caring community. Brothers and sisters, let us continue to soldier on with your government, let us continue to work with your government. We look forward to your questioning, and we look forward to working with you, because it's only through engagement we can truly serve you. I thank you.
And I thank you, Honorable Delma Thomas, still standing and still fighting for your constituents and, of course, Grenada. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the President of the Senate. She is a sister, a daughter of Saint Andrew, so we want to thank you, the Honorable Decima Williams. Thank you for joining us. Education is the passport to the future, for tomorrow belongs to those who prepare today. I'd like to invite at this time the Minister for Education, Senator the Honorable David Andrews.
So thank you very much, Madam Mistress of Ceremony. Good night to everybody. Allow me to acknowledge our Honorable Prime Minister, Deacon Mitchell. And our distinguished colleagues, cabinet colleagues, and members on the head table, our government officials, permanent secretaries, all of you, and in particular, the permanent secretaries from the Ministry of Education, P.S. Francois and Moraine, but all of the other, Jeremiah and all the others as well, but I have to single out my people. So, and especially distinguished guest, friends, family, well-wishers. Tonight, I'm happy to be here on what's approaching our second anniversary of governance. To report to the people, we gave a commitment that we were going to remain accountable To report to the people, we gave a commitment that we were going to remain accountable to you, our employers. We gave a commitment that we were going to come back to you, not just in the campaign and do the town halls, but that we were going to continue to do them while we remained in government. This is keeping our promise. And so I'm happy to be here, to be part of this accountability process. I want to put on record my appreciation for the depth and strength and integrity of leadership of our Honorable Prime Minister. A very astute leader, very controlled. God has endowed him and blessed him with a lot of wisdom. And every time I pray, I say, God, give him more. Give him more because he needs it for such a time as this. This evening, I want to just quickly start by saying a few good things about the economy. The Grenadian economy is doing well. And then I'll share with you some things about education and then I'll share with you some things about what's happening across St. Andrew Southeast. So there's a fiscal responsibility oversight committee. And when you hear about the fiscal responsibility or the fiscal resilience act, it's a set of regulations that monitor how we do business in the country to make sure we are working well, that we do things and spend the people's money within certain rules and regulations. And that group, there's that oversight committee produced a report that was published in March of twenty twenty-four. I want to read you just a paragraph of it. On the growth performance, it says, "The Grenadian economy proved to be resilient in twenty twenty-three. Despite ongoing geopolitical tensions, still high levels of global inflation and the coordinated tightening of monetary policies across the world's major central banks. In twenty twenty-three, the economy grew by an estimated 5.5% as economic activity returned to pre-COVID levels, mainly due to a recovery in the tourism and growth in the construction sector. Tourism, proxy by the hotel and restaurant sector, grew by 15.6% and the construction sector by 12.6%. All major categories of visitors and stayover visitors from all of the major source markets, except the Caribbean, recorded growth. The manufacturing sector is estimated to have grown by 4.3%. Consistent with global trends, the inflation rate fell to two..." No, I'm going to say that again. "The inflation rate fell or dropped to 2.3% from 2.9% in the previous year on an end of period basis." Now that's something to tap for, to clap for. You can go ahead. We did not make this up. This was produced by competent professionals who, after looking and scrutinizing the economy, produced this document. And that is consistent with the IMF report too. And then there's another report that talked about employment going down to 11.6%. Unemployment. What did I say? The employment? I beg your pardon. The unemployment going up to 11.6 and it's trending downwards. But let me leave that alone because I am not the Minister for Economic Development and Planning. Neither am I the Minister for Finance. So allow me to talk a bit about education. And I just want to report about ten or eleven of the major things that have happened that I believe are pretty transformative across the education sector. And this one, the first, I will talk about as access to education. And so you remember, we've introduced the universal secondary education for all students completing the CPEA. Everybody has a chance to get on into secondary school. No stigma, no dunce, no you, you get behind. Everybody gets a chance to go on. And guess what? That is with support, with targeted support provided by our curriculum officers, retired teachers, to provide academic and personal development support for those students who might be on the lower performing side. That's one. So universal access to secondary education. Recently, you must have heard, we have passed the Education Amendment Bill, which has increased the compulsory school age to eighteen. Now you must have heard seventeen inclusive. In layman terms, that is actually eighteen because seventeen inclusive means seventeen and every month you have after that seventeen years, one month, seventeen years, two months, seventeen years, eleven months, seventeen years, eleven months and twenty-nine days, eleven months and twenty-nine days, yeah? And then when you have eighteen, that's when it kicks in. So it actually means eighteen, but legal language, so don't get confused. When you hear it knocking around and being reported as seventeen inclusive, that's what it actually means. It means eighteen. So we've extended the compulsory school age to eighteen. And that is to give additional access to education, to skill for some of our nation's children. So they can go on to Nulo, to Tamsisi and to several of the other service providing agencies for skills and other forms of education to make sure we churn out a more skilled and work-ready population for Grenada Carrick and Pity Martinique. Then let's talk about education financing. You remember that in our very first year, we removed the school fees, the lab fee, the games fee. You remember those? That is to improve the access, you know, to make sure parents don't have to struggle and worry about the twenty-five or the seventy-five dollars a term or a month or a year. And so we've removed those from our primary and secondary schools, increasing access. That was part of that. And then Sister Delma talked about it quite nicely, so I wouldn't rehash all of it. The introduction of the free tuition policy, which in fact helps to support the access to education. When I was a student going to Tamsisi, I had no money to pay transportation. I had no money to buy anything to eat. I couldn't get books. I couldn't even use the library because the library they had now was just going to be built. We had the teacher's college library and we had the marriage library and I couldn't go across the town because if I went across the town, I couldn't come back to Tantin to Lime Ride to come back up in time. We, you know, it was a struggle to even find my exam fees. But we are making sure as a government that this free tuition policy takes away that burden from the average parent, from the average child who came from parenting backgrounds like mine, to be able to access higher education across the state of Grenada Carrick and Pity Education financing. Still under education financing, we have introduced the Free School Meal Program, the Free School Meal Program. So no longer do you have to find the three dollars. Or I hear somebody saying five dollars. I think it used to be three or the one dollar. But you see, for the person who has three or four children and has to find three, four, twelve dollars a day, even that could be a challenge for some parents. And we understand the value of that. And I've met several persons who said, you don't know how important that is. I mean, for one, I thought, maybe, well, you know, it's a dollar, you know, it's three dollars and... But people have appreciated this. And I sat in one of the graduations at St. George's University and I heard one of the valedictorians spoke of how important the free meal program was to her. And she had the access to a free meal. So we feel confident that we are doing the right thing, something transformative in making meals free. We have done that too within our tenure in the last two years. Along with access, we have also focused the introduction of a subvention to unattached preschools. Now you see, sometimes in the past, I think we've left preschool education and early childhood education a bit neglected. Anybody could teach, anybody, you didn't get what subjects. Well, it's little children, so you could teach them. People had that kind of outlook towards early childhood education. We are paying close attention to that and we have signaled the importance that we attach to early childhood education simply by ensuring that a subvention is dedicated to those unattached schools. We say unattached because those that are attached will benefit from the primary schools that are already getting those subventions. So when they're unattached and by themselves, they also get a subvention to ensure that the quality of delivery and supplies at that level can be second to none to improve the chances of proper acquisition at that level. I want to talk about student support because it's important to support our students. We are aware we have broken families, we have many challenges and people talk about behaviors and not that our students are to be blamed for it because they learn from us. You hear me? So anytime we point fingers at the children and the students and the young people, point them back at us. If you see my son behaving terribly, I did something that wasn't so right, maybe. I take that challenge anyhow. So student support, but we are aware of the challenges we have as a society. And so we've hired counselors, school feeding officers and school attendance officers to strengthen the student support services to our students across the nation. Now you might not think that is so significant, but I know there are counseling assistants, for instance, in this St. Andrew's parish who have retired over ten years ago. And we've just been able to, under this tenure of this government, replace them. It tells the value that we attach to providing student support services in the National Democratic Congress Government. And so the school attendance officers, the school feeding officers, we've gotten some more. For years, we've had two officers, two school feeding officers serving the nation's children in the school feeding program. So sometimes you hear people call and they say stuff, two officers to serve the over hundred plus schools that the program serves and the over 10,000 beneficiaries or students in the program that benefit from the school feeding program every single day. Now we've hired a few more officers to strengthen the student support services offering. We've also done the same, expanding the special education department and hiring more special education officers and early childhood officers to strengthen the suite of services that are offered at those levels. We are not seeing special needs students as liabilities. They're differently able, they require some different expertise, they require some different strategies to be dealt with. But if you've ever looked at this video that I'm sure many of you have looked at by Nick Voichic, no arms, no legs, but no problem. He's a motivational speaker across the world. He plays golf, he rides, he's a captain of a boat, he's married, he has children. Look at the video. So we, and these are just some of the major things that have happened across education. And we feel confident that many of these are going to impact significantly. So let me just quickly shift gears and talk about a few things that have happened across St. Andrew's Southeast. A number of projects have been started, a couple of them have been completed. And I can talk from as far as telescope where we've had a number of pavements and drains and culverts going right down to Croshaw. Many of them have been completed in the last year. Housing brigades keep working and in fact, within the last, within the period, the last year, we've had in excess of 200 applications and over 100 plus approvals for housings, for bathroom and toilets. And the officers continue to work diligently. Very recently, we've had in the Monfan area, the asphalting of one of the very dangerous corners that the villagers, they have always complained about. Vehicles would skid and come back down sometimes with load. And when we got that done very recently, the villagers were extremely delighted about that in the Monfan area. We have ongoing projects. As we speak, residents of Markie, the court that we promised you over a month that would begin a month later, has begun its repair work today. We have right in the vicinity of the Croshaw, the St. Martin de Porres School, there's the drain and the railing right at the entrance of the school that provided a threat, posed a threat to students entering. There was a ditch right on the side and some very precarious area where the water coming down from the home. All of that is just about 90% complete and the residents are extremely delighted about that too. As we speak, there's a, right in Chapel Road, there's a drain and drain works being done from the main road to secure and channel the water from passing through people's homes right in that area on Chapel Road there. And the work is continuing as we speak. There's currently a retaining wall in the Subies area to protect houses on the hillside being done through self-help, but providing the material from community development. That is happening too. There's currently the Markie Fort Road slipper drain and box drain happening. And there are several other projects that are done at some point for consideration, either being at the ministry, yet to be approved, the scope is being done. And I don't want to go into all of the listing right now, but I'm just telling you, there are lots of projects happening across the constituency. What can you look forward to? What can you expect? Telescope, we are coming to you with the Wash program. The Wash, Prime Minister did a beautiful, yes, you can go ahead, yeah. Prime Minister did a beautiful pilot and in his pilot, we learned quite a lot of lessons and the Wash program, which seeks to bring inside bathroom and toilet facilities to every household as part of the plan to eliminate the use of outside and pit latrines. That is coming to telescope. So we have identified three communities in telescope. We've already done the walkthroughs and we are going to continue to engage the potential beneficiaries to see that project realized. Then we can tell you, I know many of you have talked about the lighting of the Progress Park. Rest assured, the Progress Park will be lit. Now, one of the reasons why we have not hurried along and done Progress Park as quickly as some of the other little fields that probably up and down, you know, you have some fields that kind of up and down, but they're still lit, right? It's another story. But one of the reasons why we have not rushed with that kind of speed for Progress Park because Progress Park is an international standard ground. You hear me? When Grenada hosts international teams, one of the few grounds in Grenada that can be used as practice grounds for international teams is Progress Park. It's one of the better grounds in Grenada, not so Kerry? And Kerry's ministry has posted nose cricket, so he'll tell you, yes. And so we can't just jump and put the same lights you're seeing in some of the small fields. We can't just jump and put it in Progress Park. It will not serve the purpose. So we have to make sure we get standard lights to international standards to ensure that when we hosting South Africa or England or we hosting some Bangladesh or one of the international teams, we can still do international matches there and the lights will be up to that standard. So bear with us, but it is going to get done within this tenure of this government in this cycle. Additionally, we have also engaged some discussion about making Progress Park into a mini stadium. So we have held back a bit because we didn't want to just go and put lights in and then we had to take them away because you can't get a track because we wanted athletics with football inside plus maintain the cricket because we have a lot of good, good athletes. You see what happens at Intercol, right? Okay, let's not go there, David. All right. My partner telling me carefully in Granville, no. All right. All right. So, but with all of this sporting talent and Progress Park is still the home of Lime FC Paradise, Paradise FC, right? So we have all of this sporting talent, so we want to make sure, I mean, I think to not develop the potential of Progress Park to a full-blown mini stadium would be to underutilize the potential. So bear with us while we negotiate all of these things to get a quality international standard lighting and to contemplate the, and to contemplate the stadium. I see my cue, so I'm taking it. So I want to say to you, the Monsili Bridge... So I want to say to you, the Monsiely Bridge is one of the projects that's there to our heart, too. We know it's important, but the engineers are looking currently at it because it will take a bit of work, there's not much land space, it's a technical project, you have to get a replacement bridge before you get the actual one removed, so they're looking at it, that, too, will be treated with. Walk along with us, what we say, we do. The Granville Court is coming. What we say, we do. And we do what we say. So I'm going to rest, I'm going to just leave you with the, with the word that this team is a sung and solid team, committed to the transformation and improvement of the lives of the Grenadian people, the people of Grenada, Karaku and Piti Martinik. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator, the Honorable David Andrew. I was just stretching my legs, but he took that as a cue, as a good cue as well. Thank you so much. Our next presenter believes that in order to build any country, we must all work together to do so. He understands that in order to transform Piti Martinik, Karaku and Grenada, we must all work together to do so. He serves with humility, integrity, and great vision. In local parlance, he little but he tallawa. His strength and astuteness encourages us all to keep moving forward. He is humble, he's your humble servant, your humble servant of the state. Let us welcome to the podium the hardworking and dedicated Prime Minister, the Honorable Deacon Mitchell.
Hello, okay, there we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Well, you deserve a round of applause, the hall is full, you look beautiful. You look like you are living in a country after two years where you are free to speak your mind. Without fear or favor or intimidation. And that's the hallmark of democracy, that's why we're here, that's why we keep our commitment to say, if we say we will come back, we will come back. So you can have the opportunity to converse with us, ask questions, give your comments, give your, give your input, not just about our performance, but about the future of Grenada that you want to see. So I want to start first by thanking the colleagues who are here with me tonight, but before doing so, I want to convey apologies for those who are absent, unavoidably absent. And let me start first with the Honorable Lennox Andrews, Member of Parliament for St. Andrews Southwest, Southwestern House? Southwestern House? All right, Southwestern, you're the biggest constituency, you have the most polling divisions in St. Andrews, you know? All right, so I want to make sure that I hear that. I have a long list that Mr. Andrews has left for me to deliver on his behalf. I will do some of it, not all of it. We expect him to be back, and when we in St. George's, we will give him the opportunity to, to report to the nation and to Southwestern in particular. So Minister Andrew, as I said, unavoidably is absent, he has to attend the Caribbean Development Bank Board of Governors meeting in Canada. Unfortunately, the flights at this time of the year is once per week, we have to work on increasing that, which meant he had to leave since Saturday for a meeting for Thursday because he would not, he simply could not get there in time, and he's required to present the paper. So his apologies for not being here. Similarly, the Minister of Finance is absent because he's traveling on business for the government as well, as well as Senator, the Honorable Adrian Thomas, who's also missing. And absent is Minister Kieran James as well. So on their behalf, I convey their apologies, but I want to recognize the colleagues who are here because just so we forget, that this was the young team, that even the opposition said, when you look at us, you see experience, you see maturity, you see youthfulness, you see good-looking people. And we're here to serve, to serve you. So colleagues, again, thank you for the almost two-year journey. It has been a lot of work, undoubtedly, but it has been exciting and rewarding work and gratifying work, and the gratification comes from serving the people of Grenada. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to serve, and we're happy to come back and to report to you. So for Southwest, quickly, turning to page three, infrastructure development. Over 31 projects were completed, including 14 concrete roads ranging from 150 feet to 300 feet, seven culverts with drains, seven slipper drains, four box drains, one curb wall with slipper drain, one curb wall, one reinforcement wall, and three footpaths. That is just infrastructure work alone in Southwest. So I thank you. Community centers, repairs conducted on the Grand Bra Community Center, on the Union Community Center, and on the Harford Village Community Center. Plain fields, construction of toilet facilities and storeroom at the Ladig Plainfield, and renovation of the Granville Recreation Ground and Pavilion with Fenton. I was there on Friday night where the teachers had an ice line as testimony to the fact that the Granville Recreation Ground has been significantly improved. Seed beneficiaries, 51 new persons were added to the seed program from Southwest alone. The Burj Grove Community Development Organization computers were donated, as well as to the beginners preschool in Granville. Street lighting, over 20 streetlights have been installed in various communities across the constituency. Housing material assistance and construction. Over 143 persons were assisted with housing materials in St. Andrews Southwest alone. 14 new homes were built for persons with needy individuals and/or families, and 64 persons received assistance in conducting repairs to their homes. Bathroom and toilet material assistance program, 45 individuals or families were assisted with bathrooms and toilet construction materials, and 21 bathrooms and toilets were constructed on behalf of individuals in the constituency. That is only one of the three pages. So as I said, I'm, I'm going to give him the opportunity himself to continue to report. And sometimes it is easy for people to say, nothing is happening. The Prime Minister of St. Vincent says mankind lives in a permanent state of dissatisfaction. So no matter how much you give, you know the saying, yard you want swimming pool, swimming pool you want house, house you want mansion, mansion. But the state has limited resources, and the resources come from us, the taxpayers. So we have to make sure that we can balance the use of the resources to help those who truly are in need of help, but we have to also encourage those who are fit and able-bodied and able to work, to work. And there's lots of opportunities for us to work in Grenada. And Minister David Andrews started speaking about the performance of the economy. Well, the IMF was in Grenada again this week, they left on Friday, and I expect that they'll be putting out a statement again about the performance of the Grenadian economy. And you will see again that there is robust growth in tourism again for 2024, spurred on by the fact that there are new hotels which have opened, so there are more hotel room stock, spurred on by the fact that we had a fantastic 50th anniversary independence celebration that many Grenadians from far and wide returned to because once again they were feeling the genuine pride of what it is to be Grenadian. And I can tell you, even people who are not Grenadian, all over the world, have told me that streaming through the television and social media, many of them wish they were Grenadians on seeing the celebration and the Grenadian pride that was on display. So again, I want to congratulate all of us Grenadians for embracing our country and for ensuring that we can instill in the next generation of Grenadians the realization that there's only about 192 countries in the world, 192, give or take. And there's almost 7 billion people on earth. So we have to appreciate the unique role that this tri-island state plays in the world. We are only one of 192. We have a unique Grenadian culture, history, experience that we should never take for granted, and that we should continue to nurture, support, love, and cherish, and hold dear to our heart. So being a citizen of Grenada is a privilege, and it is something that we should never, ever take lightly. But we have some challenges, so I'm going to talk about national security since I'm the Minister for National Security. In recent times, we know that we've had an upsurge of gun-related violence, and I want to reemphasize, it is gun-related violence. In many instances, other criminal activity is trending downwards. And I don't want us to underestimate the fact that we have a gun challenge in this country. So I'm going to report to you that between January of June, January to June of 2024, the police have confiscated at six months as much as 35 firearms. That is not those who've given up the firearm voluntarily. I'm talking about those that the police have intercepted, confiscated, and arrested people for, at least 35. That's the first six months of the year. That is more firearms than the entire year last year. It is more than the year previously. In fact, in the last 10 years, it is perhaps more than any other time, and that is only the first six months of the year. In addition to that, they've also had a few people who have voluntarily brought in the firearm, and so I want to give those who brought in the firearm a round of applause because they are doing the wise thing, and they are acting not only in their own interest, but in the interest of Grenada. The firearms amnesty remains in effect until the end of July. I want us to please encourage our citizens to hand over the firearm. The card has been extended, it ends on the 31st of July. On the 1st of August, we will pass the firearms amendment bill. We are going to Parliament to debate it next week, Tuesday and Wednesday. The changes to the sentencing for persons caught with unlawful firearms are going to be draconian. And I want to give an example of what we mean. The sentences are going to move from fines and six months imprisonment to minimum of five and 10 years imprisonment to, in some cases, 20 and 40 years maximum imprisonment. This is the opportunity to voluntarily hand over the firearms. Firearms were meant for one purpose, to kill or to maim. If you want to shoot as a sport, there's a Gun Rifle Association, you can join the Gun Rifle Association, you can have a proper licensed firearm, and you can engage in shooting archery or whatever they call it as a sport. But outside of that, there really is no need for firearms in a small place like Grenada. And I think we have seen with our own eyes, and we felt the pain of young men in particular senselessly killing each other for no good reason. And the young men are somebody's sons, nephews, in some cases, fathers, because they are leaving young children without a father. And that is part of the challenge we have right now in the society, where men are not parenting, are not nurturing, and oftentimes it leads to the very thing that we are having, where you have young men who are lost and try to find salvation in the form of a firearm. So yes, the penalties are going to be draconian because we have given an opportunity for the firearms to be handed in. I want to take the opportunity to commend the Royal Grenada Police Force for the tremendous job that they've done in almost solving at 100% the recent speed of gun-related homicides. Citizens of Grenada, I am not a policeman. I'm not going to pretend I'm a policeman, and I'm not going to pretend that I could do the job of a policeman or woman. It is not an easy job. For the last two decades, the facilities, maybe more than two decades, that our policemen and women have had to operate from, in many instances, they are not fit for human habitation. They still walk out of them. It is going to take a lot of money and a lot of planning to build modern police stations across the length and breadth of Grenada. You could leave from here and walk to the Granville Police Station, and you will see the state of the Granville Police Station. That is the state we met it in. Stuff wasn't falling from the roof yesterday. Upon assuming office, we commissioned a report on the state of the police station. It is clear it needs significant work. That work cannot be done with the policemen and women in the station. We have to find a place to relocate them. But if you know Granville, walk around Granville, and the first person who could identify a suitable spot are giving you a medal. It is not that easily available. We have in fact been negotiating for almost a year. We're trying to find a suitable alternative location to house the men and women of the RGPF in Granville. In some instances, the request and the rent that we have been asked to pay is very high. But you know, if people know you don't have a choice, as them people would say, they am breaking the hand. So we've tried, and in some instances, people are not breaking the hand, and it means we are going to have to rent a building at considerable monthly rent just to house what I will call the administrative part of the police. And you have to understand, a police station is not a house. You have to have a cell, you have a place to lock people up, you have to have a place for a criminal investigation department, you have to have a place for the prosecution department. So when we have people who sat on their hands, maybe it was shaky, so they had to sit on it for decades. When they've held the post of Minister for National Security uninterrupted, no one else in the 23 years have ever held the position except So to turn around after a quarter century and talk about the performance of the police when you have contributed to the terrible conditions in which they work, to putting their lives at risk because stuff could fall from the roof and hit them, you have no moral authority to talk about how or how we should or should not treat with improving the working conditions or the support to the men and women of the RGPF. But we are not talking, we are doing. So we will relocate the Granville Police Station in short order. So we will relocate the Grenville Police Station in short order and we will then take the necessary steps to either demolish the existing building if it cannot be saved or to repair it. And that will happen within this term. We are well on our way to relocating the police headquarters. We didn't rent this time. We bought what is called the flow or the line building on the Carnage with taxpayers' money and we are renovating it and we are going to be giving the police headquarters a permanent home. I'm relatively young, but all my life, I think the police headquarters has been up on the foot. It suffers from the same problem that the hospitals suffer from. One way in, narrow road, inaccessible, limited parking, et cetera, et cetera. It is now on the Carnage. It is now on H A Blais Street because the building runs from the Carnage to H A Blais Street. It is a big spacious building that is easily accessible whether by bus, private vehicle or by foot. And so or by sea because it's on the Carnage as well. So we expect for most of the heavy construction work to be completed by the end of June, contractor if you're listening, end of June. And we expect for the police to begin the necessary moving over the next two, three months into the building. And we've done it within the two years that we got into office. You may not know this, but the police were required to move a long time ago for the Tourism Enhancement Competitiveness Enhancement Project on the foot. We are renovating the foot and that was one of the projects that was a risk of being lost because of the low implementation rate. So Mr. Boss Pipe here, MIT, unclogged the pipe. He unclogged the pipe and made sure that the project is being delivered. And the benefit of delivering the project on the foot is that the police has a brand new headquarters delivered again within record time. The St Paul's Police Station, again, that was another one in the pipeline. Minister Tellestone made sure that the Ministry for Infrastructure unclogged the pipeline and delivered the police station in St Paul's. We expect that the police will be moving back into St Paul's immediately. I was told the keys are ready to be handed over. They may want ceremony and so on, but I still let the police officers move. We could do the ceremony after. We care about the police. And we will do everything that we can to support them, to improve their facilities. The Coast Guard Base is another disaster. There was a fire there prior to our time. Outside of cleaning out the building, nothing has been done. We are giving our public commitment that we will address the Coast Guard Base as well within this term to ensure that the men and women of the Coast Guard have adequate facilities. In short, all of the police stations, all of them, Granroy, Victoria, St David, Burj Grove, they all need attention. So it is not one, it is all of them. This didn't happen overnight. This has been a situation that has existed for, as I said, several decades. So we will need brand new police stations in locations where they didn't exist before. We will need fire stations in places where they did not exist before. We can't just go and repair the police stations. There are new areas where people are living that they didn't live 20 years ago. If we take the Great South as the Minister for Mobilisation, Implementation and Transformation calls it, it has the greatest concentrations of businesses and people living. We have no fire station there and we have a police station that really is located down by where the hotels are, not the most accessible place. So we are looking at all of these issues because we have to come up with a comprehensive plan to be able to address this. But there are other things I want to raise with the police that you may not be aware of and that we will address. Simple things like firearms itself. No firearms has been procured for the police in a long time. Well, if them criminals feel they have long gun, we will give the police longer guns. So we have placed the order so that the police can in fact be properly equipped. We hope it never has to come to this, but if it comes to this, we need to ensure that they have the decided advantage in treating with those who are not prepared to take the amnesty that we've offered. We have authorised the purchase of additional vehicles, vehicles for the police. We have also recently authorised, and we have to be creative and that's where the citizens come in. We've been challenged with fire trucks because these things have to be built. Procurement is an issue, the supply chain is an issue. A good citizen recommended to us looking at a particular water tanker that can perhaps be used as a fire truck. The Commissioner of Police and his team has gone, they've looked at the tanker, they are satisfied that it can be used as a fire truck. And once he said he was satisfied, we have given immediate instructions to purchase one and we will bring it, test it and if it works, we will intend to buy some more to ensure that at the minimum there is some form of fire truck available with water in each parish of Grenada to address the risk to fire. Technology. Like everything else, crime is committed using mobile phones and a lot of the evidence is on mobile phones. So when the police carry out investigations, when they arrest people and they get the phones, they need to be in a position to be able to access the phones to see whether there is evidence of crime being committed on the phone. We have given the go-ahead for the police to acquire the necessary equipment to allow them to do so. We have also given the go-ahead for the police to acquire an automated fingerprinting system to improve their chances of detecting and solving crime. Fingerprint identity is almost like DNA identity. We have unique fingerprints and we need to make sure that the police is able to improve in that department. The systems are outdated and we have also given them and the necessary budgetary allocation and the procurement will be done to ensure this happens. So we don't talk when it's not time to talk. We don't run come at the first sign when something goes wrong to criticise the police. The police cannot stop criminals from committing crime. They could suppress crime, they could intercept crime, but if somebody decides they want to commit a crime, there's almost virtually nothing anybody can do about it. So we need to stop pretending that any of us have some Superman power that somehow we can miraculously convert the police. If that was the case, all of us would have been living in heaven a long time ago. But until that happens, we need to continue supporting the lawmen, encouraging them and helping them. And I'm repeating this because there are instances where when the police goes out to do his job, we get in the way. We want to videotape everything. Remember, the police arrests, they may charge, but they don't even have the right to prosecute. The Director of Public Prosecutions could say, I don't think there's sufficient evidence, no charge. In the middle of a case, the Director of Public Prosecution could say the witnesses aren't showing up, are withdrawing the case. People have their right to their day in court. We have an independent judiciary. The DPP has the absolute right to prosecute or not to prosecute. So if the police arrests someone, they are presumed innocent until proven guilty. They still have to prove them guilty. So there's no need to intervene. There's no need to make the police job more difficult and there's no need for us as civilians to escalate. So it is absolutely important for us to allow the police officers to do their job because if they do it wrong, the justice system will step in. So I want to re-emphasise that because when the police, we ask the police until we need them. We ask lawyers until you need a lawyer. And you don't appreciate the doctors and the nurses until you find yourself in the hospital. And we don't appreciate the importance of agriculture and farming until Covid hits us. So all I'm saying is let us respect the lawmen, let us support them because they all have brothers, sisters, mothers, fathers, children. They may have one or two bad apples. If that's the case, they will be found out. But it is important for us to appreciate that. I will go on to another sober topic which is the prisons. This compound was built centuries ago. It has almost 400 inmates, most of whom are men. In fact, the numbers of women are inconsequential. We need prison reform. And we need a new prison. So you see, colleagues, the prison was built centuries ago. The overcrowding, I've been a lawyer 22 years. At least for 22 years, I've known it's been overcrowded. It is something that we have to address because the prison also poses a national security risk. So if you have overcrowding, if you don't have the right facilities, if you have very dangerous criminals who have no sense or moral compass who will kill for no reason, then you're dealing with animals and you have to have them in solitary confinement all the time. Let's be clear, there are people who will kill you for no reason. We have some of them at the prison. But we have little capacity for solitary confinement because of the overcrowding. And there are HR challenges at the prison as well that we need to address. So I'm saying that too has to be addressed. That too was left to fester for decades. But the same way we didn't run, duck or hide from the pension issue that persisted for 40 years is the same way we will not duck, hide or run away from the prison issue. We will tackle it head on. So we will be looking for your support when we talk about building a new prison. The one that is there simply, all of these things were built by the Frenchmen and Englishmen who had a thing about forts, narrow roads and going up on the hill for the view. So the same challenge the Royal Grenada Police Force Headquarters had, the same challenge the hospital has, is the same challenge the prison has. One way in, one way out, narrow road, beautiful view. But no longer functional in a modern society. So we will have to build a new prison. But we also have to ensure that we do not criminalise behaviour that otherwise needs a little counselling or a little talking to. So when men get into a little fight and the young boys and so on, we have to find a way to teach them dispute resolution so they don't go to prison simply because they've engaged in a little scuffle or a little fight. Or if they are genuinely hungry and they thief the mother bread or something and they send them to Baklet and the next thing we converting them into a criminal because it happens. So it is important that we are able to distinguish between serious criminal offences and minor matters. People should not be going to jail for a minor traffic offence. That's not what prison was meant for. So we have to be able to ensure that we reduce the number of people at the prison because just so we are clear, they're eating your money. The more people you have in prison, is the more taxpayers' money are being spent to look after them. In fact, I think we know this saying, some fellas has decided Christmas time, they're going up. Because it's easier up there, the bread nice, the pork and thing nice. So the point I'm making is we have to ensure that we can distinguish between people we need to protect the society from and those who might just need a little help. And we know oftentimes when people come into contact with the law for the first time, if when they come out, we don't give them the support, we don't give them a job, they tend to go right back in. Right? So we may not want to accept it, but when someone gets charged with things like obscene language and they have a criminal record and then they go for a job and they say, well, sorry, I can't hire you because of that. Then they become frustrated, they're unemployed and they are more likely to commit crime again rather than saying, you know, all right, this is crude language. It's not something to criminalise or send you to jail over. So I'm making those points because it is not one side of the coin. It is not simply a question of more guns for the police, better police stations, a new prison. We also have to work on our own behaviour to make sure that we don't create and produce criminals. And so the Ministry of Social and Community Development, the Ministry of Mental Health, Youth and Sport, Culture, the Creative Economy, all of us have to work together. Education to make sure that we create citizens who do not become criminals. Because it is our problem. Let me repeat that. The police can't, by the time they're in police hands, it's too late. We need to make sure that we use our education system, the Ministry of Youth and Sports, Mental Health, Social and Community Development to create law-abiding, upright, purposeful citizens. So that is our collective responsibility. So I didn't see the timekeeper stand up. But I appreciate that there's several of you and a few of us and the town hall is ready for you to get the opportunity to ask questions, to give your input, to make your recommendations, et cetera, et cetera. I will say one thing, this is St Andrews and it's the breadbasket. Agriculture, fishing, poultry, we haven't talked about it. So I'm saving it for when the minister comes back. So even if it's in St George's, we're going to have to talk about it because we recognise that is still the real economy and we have to work collectively and do a lot to ensure that we can boost that area. All of the reports say tourism is growing by leaps and bounds. We want the reports to say agriculture is growing by leaps and bounds. We want the report to say poultry is growing by leaps and bounds and we want the report to say fishing and fish processing is growing by leaps and bounds. I'm saying this to say we have a lot of work to do in that sector and it requires all of us to be on board for this. So I want to thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come back and to report Minister for Education. I wanted to read a little letter because you see sometimes when people do things, we don't appreciate that it actually is meaningful. It's a letter addressed to you, sir. And I think it's important for us to read. It goes back to education. "We are grateful to God for the new year 2024. We pray that all that God has for us this year will become a reality. On behalf of the management, New Low Trainees and their parents and guardians, I express or perform gratitude to the government through the Ministry of Education for the inclusion of New Low Trainees in the free tuition policy." "The impact of the policy is already being felt. With one more round of admissions to do before the end of the 2023-2024 academic year, we have already exceeded the total number of new trainees we admitted for the whole of the 2022-2023 academic year." "This term, we have employed four new teachers to accommodate the high numbers registered. It is obvious that this is just the beginning of the huge numbers of youth who are going to come to New Low." And you know I have a soft spot for New Low. But I'm making the point that when they want to talk about young people, when they want to talk about youth, when they want to talk about poverty, it is through education that you will lift people out of poverty. So I will go on. "I'm excited at the fact that more secondary school graduates and dropouts are going to be engaged, trained, employed and/or start their own small businesses for a better Grenada." Let me repeat. "I'm excited at the fact that more secondary school graduates, dropouts are to be engaged, trained, employed and/or start their own small businesses for a better Grenada." But we didn't start here, stopped there. "Last year April, I made an appeal for the increase of New Low subvention from 75,000 to 100,000 per month." to a hundred thousand per month." Minister, did we give that increase? Let the people hear you. Minister, did we give the increase? Oh, we did. Right, we gave the increase of a hundred thousand per month. So let me repeat that. In addition to the free tuition, in addition to the fact that New Low has had to hire four new employees, we gave an increase of twenty-five thousand dollars per month, every month to New Low. So you see, we end banking of the money to wait for election, to hope that we will go back in. If the CBI revenues are doing better, we are spending the money on our people. So what I would ask is give us the opportunity to continue spending the money on our people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Prime Minister. And of course, I didn't stand up because he actually has not completed the task for the evening. He had, the list goes on and on and on. But you know what that means? It means you have to join us in Caracu or next week in the northeast, we're going to Boca Secondary for more updates on our ministries, our constituencies and of course, the development of Grenada. And we, Prime Minister read a letter and a young lady by the name of Chloe Noel, she wrote a love letter to the Prime Minister. So while we're on letters, and what a wonderful way to spend our money on our youth. And of course, they are the future. And Prime Minister is not the only one who has a connection to New Low. I've, I actually had two of my brothers attend New Low. And Mr. Killer attended New Low and I'm sure a lot of you here have experience with New Low. Some of you are making more money than us, right? Diplomers, yeah. So, New Low, thank you so much, Mr. Prime Minister. And thank you to our ministers, the Honorable David Andrew, Minister for Education, Senator the Honorable Gloria Thomas and of course, the Honorable Delma Thomas. Thank you so much for your presentations. It's now time to hear from you, our residents or constituents of St. Andrew and surrounding areas. So I give you the opportunity at this time to ask your questions. And of course, you are also allowed to make comments and share your ideas with us. So you have the floor. If you have questions, please raise your hand and a microphone will be given to you. And I see a question already in the audience. So we, we take questions at this time. So, thank you. So we have three hands, four, five. So you're gonna take them one by one. If you have a question, please stand in the aisle. Go ahead.
A pleasant good night to all the members of parliament, including the Honorable Prime Minister, Dick Mitchell. My first question is to the Prime Minister, question or whatever I want to ask him. Mr. Prime Minister, my name is George Maguire from Harford Village. My, my concern is I need you to have a meeting, to arrange a meeting with the poultry farmers. I don't want nobody else. Yes. You all hearing me?
Yes.
Mr. Prime Minister, I want you to arrange a meeting with the poultry farmers. Please, I want nobody else but you in that meeting. Because, because I'm tired, very tired. And the reason why I'm tired, you know, is because meetings upon meetings upon meetings and nothing happening. I have a capacity three thousand birds. And all I have in my pen right now is two layers, trickery all foul. And for all these years, all these years, I'm doing, all these years, nothing is happening to us. I want nobody else but you to arrange a meeting with the poultry farmers. I don't even want to hear about your association.
Alright, so I, I can commit to the meeting. But, but when you say you don't want anybody else in the meeting. Poultry farmers, alright, okay.
But you, you will be the head man on the table. A couple of months ago, we had a meeting right here and I told them that I was tired. Nothing happening, only talk after we leave here, everything fall down. Right. So they was talking about, they was talking about, a cooperative. They was talking about a cooperative here. We had this union man, Brian Grimes, always like to talk, talk, talk and no action. Right? No action. How much months ago, nothing happening, right? So at least I will, I will learn that now. I have plenty more, you know, but I'm gonna hold up all.
Thank you, sir. We have taken notes. We will organize a meeting and invite all the poultry farmers. Our next question, please.
Good night to everyone. My name is Norris from Southwest constituency. I'm here today. Alright, so I, I work with the School of Performing Arts and Science, TA Marisho Community College, Marybow Campus. And forty years ago, TA Marisho Community College was the center of, of, that was the center of agriculture. That was the only institution in the OECD that had, that was the only institution in the OECD that used to teach agriculture. Now, nearly all of our extension officers that retired now, between last year and this year, they passed through, they passed through farm school, right? Now, we have the hospital, we have Carlton Homecoming just now, right? And we have farm school. Now imagine, we have a biogas treatment plant that doesn't have a place to store the biogas. We have to let it go in the air, flame it, let it go in the air. What about if we activate these things so that we can give the hospital gas? And this is cleaner gas, we are going green, we can give Carlton Home gas, right? And also, the school can, can give all these institutions food. Now, I am not telling you, I do all the toes with the children that comes there every day. And you see now, as school is going on, on break, I do all the toes. All the schools that comes in, I do the toes. And you know what? I sent it for my GS the other day. That was a shock, that I felt so bad, but in a sense, good, that a little guy, I, I video all my toes. And this little man asked me, when I was introducing myself, he asked me, is this place abandoned? No, it's serious. If we have to talk about agriculture, we need to talk about farm school. Yeah? And I am, I'm tired seeing a lot of the ministers, whoever, coming up to farm school to facilitate meetings and not come there to talk about farm school. We are in, in a very bad condition up there, right? We have a laboratory that was, that was funded by some Canadian NGOs. And for years, but again, it's not this administration. For years, this laboratory is there that's supposed to serve for testing water, testing soil and stuff like that. And it's, it's, nothing is happening, right? So I am asking, I'm asking, please, I don't want, I don't want us to talk about agriculture and not talk about the School of Performing Arts and Science, TA Marisho Community College. Now, if we gotta talk about agriculture, let us have a conversation about farm school. Let us have a deep conversation and not just a conversation that will just say, oh, things is in the pipeline. Because I hear a lot of people, even Den and No, even Senator Posweda, I hear you talk about it, but I ain't seen nothing happening. And we are in a bad state. The reason why, the reason why we are in a bad state, not management, not management, because we asking for things from farms, from TAMCC and they're not giving us. And I think the new council that is there with Dr. Greenwich at the head, you know, she's doing an excellent job. But please, I'm asking this administration to please look out for farm school. Because there's a lot there that the country can benefit from, from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, allow me to respond, the permission of the Prime Minister. So the TAMCC falls under the purview of the Ministry of Education. And I have good news for your brother because as part of the skills outreach within the Ministry of Education, the TAMCC Marybow Campus has been identified as one of the facilities to be made into a center of excellence for agriculture. Now, not only TAMCC Marybow, but there's also been the campus in Caracu that has been identified for making a marine center for boat building, fishing and all of those kinds of stuff. But more specifically to your question, we have considered that it's within the skills strategy that we have adopted, that we have approved. And those discussions have in fact started at the level of the council, Dr. Greenwich and her team. So it's a matter of implementation. But I, I say to you, we do not want to do things in any rushed manner that will not see us develop a quality center of excellence. Because it's one thing to just say we are resuming classes. But it's another thing to say we are resuming it at the highest standard to ensure that it's up to the industry, we have gotten the right equipment and we can truly be assented at all of our regional counterparts from the OECD and other Eastern Caribbean territories can come to benefit from our agricultural programming. So that is on the agenda. But thank you for your question, sir, and your observation.
Yes, good evening to the Honorable Prime Minister and the rest of the National Democratic Congress Action Team. I also want to especially recognize the Minister of Implementation and Transformation, the Honorable Andy Williams. Let's hear it for Andy Williams. Now, I'm really impressed with what the government has done in the last approximately two years. However, as a resident of St. Andrew, I have two concerns and one concern as a father. The first one relates to the Granville Bus Terminal. This is an issue along with the second one that I've been raising since the previous administration. Where the shelters for the bosses, the loading of bosses were built. Obviously, they're very small. They don't really shelter people in this raining and there's not really much that could be done about that now. But right now, as anyone who uses that bus terminal, including the bus drivers would know, as soon as a moderate rain falls, that area turns into what I call Lake La Bae. Now, maybe it was a lack of foresight or the project was rushed, but the water from the roofs of the shelters is drained straight onto the ground. Now, there's no, no tarmac, no concrete. So I don't know what could be done in the short term to assist with that before a proper drainage could be done. Number two, again, an issue I've raised since the previous administration. The piece of road directly across from playground at Progress Park, I have the pictures on my phone. It's on the outside bank of the river where the water hits when it rains heavily. Now, we've been blessed the last few years, or cursed, farmers may feel, with a lack of heavy rainfall. However, as most people would know, most meteorologists are predicting a, I think the term used is a hyperactive hurricane season. So this could result, even if we don't get a hurricane, a tropical storm or a tropical depression could pass over the island, dump five to six inches of rain. As I said, I have the pictures. A portion of the guardrail is already suspended in the air. It wouldn't take much more than two or three days of heavy rain hitting that bank for that piece of road to collapse. You cannot send the cars, the traffic through Grand Bryce State because of the condition of the road and the low-lying bridge. So I guess you'd have to put them through the back of Progress Park. This is something that needs urgent attention. Lastly, as a father, now I do want to commend the Minister for Education, the Honorable David Andrew. He did everything in his power to assist me. I have a son who completed the pre-veterinary program at the St. George's University. He's been accepted into the veterinary program to obtain his PhD in veterinary science. However, for whatever reason, I don't know if it's a legal agreement that was signed years ago. I'm not a lawyer, that's not really my thing, but the scholarships are not available until January. So this means that he has to wait until January to begin his doctorate program. Now, to me, this, this doesn't really make sense. You know, I, I would like to ask the government, like I said, I don't know what agreements were signed in the past, but if something could be done about this, particularly as if we're speaking about agriculture, I'd also like to say, can we get a scholarship for the pre-veterinary program? Let's encourage more students to go into the veterinary program. Thank you.
Thank you. Minister Andrew, do you care to respond or?
Alright, I'll, I'll just respond on the Progress Park Infrastructure Challenge. We, it's noted and I will certainly ask either the road officer for the area or other officials from the Ministry for Infrastructure, including the CTO who's from Granville, to, to look into the matter. In relation to the Granville Bus Terminal, we will also look into the matter, but I should point out, we are seeking to begin to seriously address the transportation challenges in Grenada. And one of the starting points is to have the bus terminals, or terminus, whichever way we may call them, transferred to the Transport Commission. Because as it stands now, the Port Authority is managing the one in Tongue. I'm not even sure who is managing the one in Granville or the one in Sotels. And so if it's Port Authority, then that's not really their fault. Their fault is to manage ports, not, right? So they deal with the sea, not the, you know. So we seeking to, to begin the process of, of having the transfers so that legal authority will invest in the Transport Commission. Because it's really their mandate to start treating with, with, with transportation. So we expect that the plan will be rolled out shortly to the public. It actually does require some legal work and so some allocation of resources because they'll have to be legally transferred to the Transport Commission to give them jurisdiction over it. And then we'll have to take the necessary budgetary allocations to start addressing the challenges. We recognize that the terminals are not conducive to passenger transport. They lack amenities, they lack covering, they lack, in many instances, proper bathrooms. You can't get a drink, it's hot, et cetera, et cetera. So that's one of the things we've hired, the commission is fully staffed of very competent Grenadians, both within and in the diaspora. A new CEO with significant experience in Trinidad and Barbados has been hired. They had their first press conference, I think about two or three weeks ago. And so their mandate is to start addressing those issues. So I would say, the rest has showed that between now and September, you should see a lot more visibility from them. Including their desire to pilot a school bus transportation system to start addressing how we transport our schoolchildren in a more safe and conducive environment. Minister Andrew will, will take the scholarship issue for veterinary and pre-veterinary medicine.
Thank you, PM, and thank you for your question, sir. In relation to the vet scholarships, indeed, by the charter we have with the St. George's University, University, the regulation has it that we are only allowed one vet scholarship. However, every year since we've been in office, we have been requesting additional ones and we've been getting additional ones. So I think at the moment, there are, there are two persons there, notwithstanding that we are only on paper entitled to one. Further, is that we have been negotiating with them as part of our regular engagement with the St. George's University to, to raise the number of veterinary scholarships from one to five. This is currently under active consideration by the university. They yet to get back in touch with us, but we have been addressing that issue because we recognize how important that area is for our developmental trajectory in livestock and animal husbandry, right? So thank you very much. Hopefully, your son can benefit from that in, in short order. We do hope.
Thank you, Minister, and thank you for your questions. Next, we do have somebody else with a question.
Good evening to the Prime Minister and his team. My name is Rudolph Alexander from Telescope. I've got two suggestions regarding housing. The first one is housing for special needs. And my reason for raising that issue is couple of years ago, a returning national who visited that home in Wall, and we were told that the young people there, there was a young lad in particular, once he reached seventeen, he's got to leave the home. So I am suggesting that when you all have these programs where you're building houses, at least you should have about two or three for these type of people. Because what they were saying is that it's okay, it's easy for them to get a job, but for housing, it was, is very difficult. So that's why I, you know, I raised that issue, that, that point. And the next, the next one is climate change. We all know that climate change is here to stay. And my thing is water is very important. And from my experience, I sit in the verandah and I see the amount of water that's wasted through coming from the gutter. So I am saying to the government, I know it could be a hard one, but all the houses that would be built, what would be, be built in the future, if they can get them to put a, a tank, then you would collect a lot of water because as it says, it's a lot of water that has been wasted. And I mean, if it means that at the end of the day, the government have to give the people and them incentive to, 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 to put a tank, I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you for those suggestions. We have more questions, we have some questions the left of the auditorium down, down here. And Senator Deanna Gloria Thomas, she'd like to respond to your suggestions.
Thank you for your question. The concern that you raised is one that we are currently looking at to address. As a matter of fact, the old location where the Carlton Home was in St. Paul's, we have recently cleared that spot to do transition houses for people that you speak about. So Carlton House will be moved up to Granville and will be using that spot where the old Carlton House is to build transition home for young people when they will age to leave the, the homes. So we are working with a group called Rich Within, they should be done sometime this, end of this month, for us to continue our discussion and to take the whole question of building this facility forward. So this is something we should have by maybe next year time, so quite intriguing to address that situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. Again, if you have questions, please make your way to the, to the aisle so we can easily spot you.
All right, before, I just wanted to respond to the very valuable suggestion about rainwater harvesting and the need for tanks. We intend to actually pursue this. The severe drought we've had, one of the most severe in the last fifteen years, has clearly told us that this has to be addressed. So we are working with NADMA, NAWASA and the Ministry of Finance, as well as the hardware firms in Grenada, to come up with an appropriate policy that will encourage everyone, whether it's new or existing, to in fact begin the process of having at least one water-saving tank available at their homes so that we could begin the process of rainwater harvesting on a permanent and national basis. So your suggestion is very welcome and I think even in terms of planning permission for new builds, we are working to try and make sure that that is one of the conditions that would be imposed, to ensure of a new construction, that we build water resilience into it. Because if the rains didn't come in, in, in the last two weeks, we would have had a significant problem in one. So your suggestion is, is very much welcome. Thank you.
All right, good night, everyone. Good night, Prime Minister and to everyone here present. Just before I get to my question, I just want to blow the trumpet for Minister Andrew, all right? He didn't mention that last February to February of this year, that a new wing at the St. Andrew's RC School was constructed. And therefore, very relief for eighty-five students of that school, plus a new, there was also a new stated yard kitchen, which is funded, sponsored by a corporate citizen and space for new libraries. So thank you very much. Okay, the Ministry of Education through the guidance of Minister Andrew here. Just a very short question. Previously, the limit for sole funding of small projects was fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a new limit? And if so, what is it? Also, how, how can we access it as well? Okay? Charity begins at home. I think you all know what I mean. So thank you very much for that, for that opportunity to ask a question.
Thank you for your question.
I'm not sure I quite get the question. So I will try to answer what I think is being asked. The only limit or change that has happened is to procurement, where previously you were not permitted to, I would use the word sole source, as in the government could not sole source a supplier for goods or services, or it could only do so if the quantum of the goods or services was fifteen thousand dollars and under. We moved that limit up to a hundred thousand dollars by changing the Procurement Act. But it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not a, a fund that you can access. It's basically saying if someone has to supply goods or services to the government, that the government has the authority in law to sole source it, as opposed to entering into a situation where you may have to do competitive bidding or so. That's really the only change that, that has been made. So I, I don't know if that answers the question. Okay.
Well, thank you. Next question, please.
Good afternoon, everyone, Prime Minister and Ministers. I'm from the area of Woodbudge Grove and Balthazar. And I am addressing these questions to both Honorable Gloria Thomas and Delma Thomas. And seeing Honorable Andy Williams there, I think it's most appropriate now. We have two bridges in those areas. The one connecting Borregad to Butch Grove. I am very scared to walk on that bridge. And I am concerned about the children traveling between Borregad and Butch Grove. The rail, there's no rail there right now and the rainy season is coming. And when that river overflows, wow, it goes all into the box, old boxing plant. And then we have to pass all the way around Coventry, down to Providence. So I'd like you to take a good look at that bridge. Even now, if you're walking on that bridge and a vehicle is coming, you're shaky. I don't like to pass there at all. And then what we call the Leicester Bridge, is there any way we can raise that bridge? That flat bridge? Ah, it is getting more and more, it's crazy. Like when the river overflowed this bank, the traffic is closed there and we have to pick all the way around Bylands or, and not everybody in that area drives. So if you come from Granville and the bus doesn't decide to go down there with you, you have to find some means of carrying your luggage. And when I was walking, I found it difficult to get bus to travel to St. George's. So I would like you, Honorable Andy Williams, work with these two great ladies and see what you can do about these two bridges for us, please.
Okay, thank you so much for your, your concern. In one of our town hall meetings, wasn't quite a town hall meeting, but one of our constituency meetings at the Butch Grove Community Center, this concern was raised. And we spoke to the people at the airport, the road officers at the airport, they visited with us on two occasions. What the road officer shared with us is that that bridge has to be completely rebuilt. He said that part of the bridge is limestone and to put concrete with it, it will not hold. So we have been looking at the situation and trying to correct it. So whenever a location is made for a, a new bridge, then we will address it. But we are aware, the people in Butch Grove raised it at a meeting and we went with the road officer to look at it and to get some advice, how they will move forward it, with it. So this is something that we are looking at just the same. In terms of the flat bridge, that have been there so many years, I don't really show how they will address it, but maybe your suggestion is one that could be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. While we're talking about Butch Grove, I have an important announcement from NAWASA. And NAWASA is inviting all residents of Balthazar, Butch Grove and surrounding areas to attend an important meeting regarding the Seven Sisters Water Transfer Project. And of course, this is a crucial meeting as part of the Climate Resilience Water Sector in Grenada G-Cruise Project. And the meeting will take place on Thursday, June twenty-seventh at 5:00 PM at the Melrose Entertainment Complex. So if you're from those areas, surrounding areas, please try to attend that important meeting. Next question, please. Thank you.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Deacon Mitchell and his colleagues. Now, my concern is regarding to tuition assistance. My name is Chrisalyn Belphone, Honorable David Andrew, I'm not sure if the name ring a bell. We had conversations regarding to tuition assistance regarding to UE. You, I'm not sure if you remember my long message. No, I must apologize because I'm sorry, but I'm kind of not sorry. Why? If I did not relay my concerns to you, I would have not known that you have made payments towards my tuition. Now, I made mention to you that I will have to go to UE to finalize what really went on within that transaction. Now, I went there, I'm a person, I'm not afraid to call names, but I will try not to. I will try not to, but when I went there, the person I spoke to said that they're not seeing any form of transactions. Mind you, you gave me the receipts from your end and she, the person I spoke to had no form of say, well, let me go through. She was only looking at list, right? My representative, Lennox Andrew, he made a walk through the community and I expressed this, I expressed this with him and he made mention to me that it's not only me that have that issue, right? The government making payments and UE saying that they have no form of payments from you guys. Now, it's summer, which is coming to an end and payments have to be made. Now, on my account, they owe me for the previous, which your, which your government made payments to. And I also have the upcoming semester to pay for. Mind you, I'm already in debt with a loan to assist me and with increasing fees over the years, that amount of money have already vanished. So my question to you is, what's the next step? Because I've tried contacting you, but as a busy man you are, I haven't gotten a response as yet. So that's my concern and that's my question.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. So yes, I do remember your long message and I do remember that I did respond and got the receipt number and information of confirmation that we did make payments on your behalf. So it obviously means that there is something happening here and my PSCs are with me. So I, I think they're hearing that, so I encourage them to take note because here we have a person for whom we have made payments of tuition assistance to the University of the West Indies. And while we provide evidence that a payment has been made on our end, there's no record or reconciliation on the other side. So that's something that we have to look into. Obviously, we are going to treat with it from our end, we are going to try to reconcile with the University of the West Indies. I just think it might just be some kind of error. I don't know if there was an error in the account number, I don't know, but we look and see. We are just, we just remain committed to continuing to provide tuition assistance for persons who, who apply for it and who might so qualify in terms of your grade point averages and all of those kinds of stuff. So we'll probably keep you posted, I'll probably message me again so that I can remember to follow through and, and follow up on this. But my PSCs are also taking notes, so we'll follow up and hopefully get in touch with you. Thank you though, and I'm sorry about the inconvenience.
Thank you, Minister, and thank you for your question. Good evening.
To the head table. Good evening to everyone. Happy belated Father's Day to all the fathers. Okay, I do not have a question, but I have a compliment and I'm here to say thank you. Now, last town hall meeting at the GSS School, I raised something concerning the retired cooks. I posed the question to my Honorable Deacon Mitchell, or my Prime Minister, I don't know about if it's yours, but it's my Prime Minister. I am here to say that he did raise the retirement cooks stipend. You know, sometimes we hear on the different news, the different radio station, that they ain't doing anything, but tonight I want Grenada, Caracoo, Pitty Matnick and all over the world that are listening, that they did give us a raise in the retirement cooks stipend. I also want to congratulate Sister Claudette Joseph. Sister Claudette, I was waiting for a raise to pay for six years under the NNP. That's why I said retired in poverty, because the amount of money we used to work for when you get your NS is just a, a little change, right? But I, I wouldn't receive the, the sixty dollars because I retire, but I'm happy, I'm very happy for the cooks that getting the hundred and twenty, one thousand two hundred dollars. Because even I worked with the government for twenty-three years and my salary didn't even reach a thousand dollars. So, so tonight I want to say thank you very much to the head table. I always call Dr. Prime Minister Deacon Mitchell, the man with the vision for Grenada. Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work. Stay united. United you stand, divided you shall. United you stand, divided you shall fall. So stay united in Jesus' name. My name is, my name is Brother Stanislaus. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Stanislaus. I know you approve this message. And thank you for the best wishes to our ministers and our government and continue to do your great work. We have more questions, you can also share comments. I see three hands.
Okay, so protocol has been established.
You can proceed with your question.
Okay, so my first question goes to the Honorable Dickon Mitchell, right? I have great concerns with the issue of food and nutrition security in Grenada and the Caribbean as a whole. In relation to the outgoing Caracol chairman, in his presentation, he stated 2525, which actually means that the six billion importation bill, we are trying to reduce this by 25%. So 25% by the year 2025. You look at places like Burkina Faso, President Traore, which I believe you have some of the leadership skills as, the only difference is that he has more natural resources, but you are making use of the natural, the little resources that we actually have. How far have we reached in achieving that goal and what is Grenada plan mechanism in helping to achieve that goal? So this is just the first question. Let me move quickly. The second question goes to the Minister of Agriculture. Well, I realize your shoulder is very broad tonight, Mr. Prime Minister. This is one of the questions I would like to ask and these are some of the challenges. We are aware of many challenges that farmers face daily due to climate change and that is difficult to fix at this time. In tackling the issue of food security, these are some of my grave concerns. Farmers need to be better equipped to face this challenge in dispensation. In regarding to concessions, right, granted to farmers for vehicle, what we would have realized, sometimes you meet farmers and buses and they might have lettuce package in a bag and they have to sit close to a conductor or someone like that because they are not able to make an application for a vehicle. Because one of the deterrent would be the 20,000, which is the gross. I believe that this should be categorized rather than it's just across the board. Because example, someone who dealing with much ponage, like example, you're dealing with melons, you would able to reach your gross quicker than someone who is farming or doing something that has a lighter capacity. So what I believe, I recommend that we, the, we look, the extension division is doing a great job. I think Miss St. Louis, sometimes you get up in the morning and you meet extension officers very early, they are coming to the farms and so on. This is very good, motivating the farmers. What I want to, what I would recommend is that we have this thing set in a way that the best agricultural practices, you would judge concession based on that rather than just saying, listen, you have to reach 20,000 as a gross. I don't think that that is really fair. Example, someone doing seasoning would take a longer time to reach 20,000 comparing to someone who is dealing with, with, with melons, okay? So the next issue is loans, in terms of loans funding for farmers. And this is, this is a big deterrent. There are a lot of young people that want to get into farming, but the capital, it's very difficult to start up. And some of the financial institution, they would not, they didn't structure their loans in a way that would accommodate farmers. They see it as high risk. I know the government will not able to do everything, but one of the suggestion, you know, there is a loan, there's a crop loan, which is called a Kiesan credit card. And you know, I hope that the Minister of Agriculture is listening, wheresoever he is now, that this is something that could be developed to help farmers to go through the process where they are planting and so on. And I think this would able to boost the agricultural sector as well. The government can also help us in terms of subventions, in terms of opening a credit union, which, you know, I have an acronym here, which actually state Grenada, Grenada Farmers Credit Union, so GMCC. And I believe that even the financial institutions where a lot of farmers are banking their monies and they are not able to get loans, the farmers, the government has the expertise, the people to help, that as farmers, we can create our own credit union and start looking out for our members, okay? So this is my contribution.
Thank you for your contributions. And the Minister for Agriculture is not here, but I see the Prime Minister picking up the microphone. He may have some contributions to make as well.
All right, so thank you Penny for the recommendations. So I will, I think the recommendation regarding the gross tonnage of vehicles that qualify for concessions is a valid one that probably we will have to relook because I do agree with you that if someone is selling lettuce or seasoning peppers or lighter type produce, they don't necessarily need a pickup to be able to move or sell the produce. So of course I inherited, we inherited the situation, so I think it will require some analysis by the policy team and some consultations with farmers to see whether it makes sense or not. On the question of where we are with 25 by 25, specific to Grenada, we are not where we should be. We actually lagging behind significantly. So there's no question that our productive sectors is actually the weakest sectors of the economy. And I'm saying the productive sectors meaning fishing, agriculture. We are not growing as we should and it requires some significant investing, some significant tools to get younger people involved and also to do more agroprocessing. Guyana is actually very supportive for, so for example, they are donating, they are donating shade houses to us. In fact, the president of Guyana is hoping to be able to commission the shade houses when he gets here for the Caracol meeting between the 3rd and 4th of July. So they are, in light of the newfound wealth, they are not being stingy, they are being quite supportive to, to the region in terms of addressing some of those things. There are some specific areas that Grenada could, in my view, have a decisive reduction in its food import. One is actually poultry. And the gentleman spoke about the need for meeting with the poultry farmers. We actually do have some large plants that have kind of not come to, I would say, fruition as quickly as possible. They're in Montrose, they're in Felix Park, and then we have a number of small farmers who are also getting involved in poultry. What we need is a comprehensive plan that could incorporate all of this and some proper incentives to disincentivize the eating of old frozen chicken that are imported from God knows where. And to encourage the fresh eating of chicken, but that means we have to find ways to make it comparatively speaking cheap. And we have to make sure that we support the poultry, but that's one area. We import billions, sorry, millions of dollars of poultry every year. So that is one area where we can significantly reduce our food import bill. We certainly could do better with our own livestock, whether it's rabbits, goat, sheep, cows, and obviously we can eat a lot more fish, which is probably healthier than some of the imported meat. And then we can talk about all of the canned foods and the processed foods, which oftentimes are very high in salt and helps create a lot of the conditions. So what I would say is that we need a lot more work in order to be able to get to the point where we can reduce our food import bill by 25% by 2025. We have two years left, basically a year left in relation to that. Your suggestion about the farmers cooperatives is something that I would support because the financial cooperatives, the credit unions have done very well, but the productive cooperatives have not done as well as they should do. Having said that though, I would also say that farmers, this mic is going in and out, the farmers, the government can support, but the farmers also have to be prepared to be united and work together. And we have to, we have to support them in that, in that initiative. I'll give an example. I don't think people appreciate that the Grenada Cook Association and the Grenada Knottmaker Association is a farmers cooperative, right? You have, in some cases, GCNA three government representatives, but you have six farmers who are elected by farmers and they run the GCNA, not the government. They come to government from time to time for help, but the assets essentially belong to GCNA and it is the farmer's own. So we also have to make, be, accept that if we're going to have farmers cooperatives, whether it's fishing cooperatives, farming cooperatives, that the farmers themselves are going to have to make the right decisions about the people they put on the boats and to make sure that it's people that actually can run and help support the businesses and so on, right? Because we are still selling all the raw produce for the most part, straight out of the country rather than trying to engage in things like agroprocessing and so on. So we're committed to supporting, but it also means as farmers, we also have to make the right decisions and we have to be prepared to change. We have to use new technology, we have to be able to embrace the use of things like shade houses, use renewable energy to power production, look at how we plant stuff that is more pest resistant, look at how we do in no farming, look at hydroponics and those sort of things. We can't just simply go along and produce in the same way that we produce because of things like climate resilience, because of the risk of pests and diseases and so on. And obviously, the competition of importing cheaper food into Grenada is also a challenge. So I'm saying this to say Penny that it's not a simple solution, but I'm happy you have some very innovative ideas and I wish you to come out from just the town hall meetings and get more involved in, you can come sit with us at the Ministry of Agriculture, sit with the extension officers and start helping us form the farmers cooperative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prime Minister. Next question.
Hello, good night, everyone. I'm from the Pearls, Moya area. And I think last year, there was, the bridge almost collapsed. In fact, the bridge and the surrounding buildings. So I would like to find out, or would like to know if there is any plan in work to take care of that Moya Bridge situation. And because I think it has to be done soon. Because the next time we have such bad weather, it means the whole place will collapse and traffic coming from whether it's north or south would create a problem. Second question to the Prime Minister. A couple of years ago, I addressed the former Prime Minister regarding Hope, the property that was bought in Hope for the University of the West Indies. And I was never given an answer by him. But my answer, my question is, do the government still own the property or has it been sold to someone else? So I, so I would like Prime Minister Dickon Mitchell to make a very strong effort and if inquiries or whatever, to find out what is the situation with the property that was sold to the government. Because I know by now, we have lost the bid for the university, but I want to make sure that it's still, the land is, or the property is still in the hands of the government of Grenada. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. So we're addressing Moya Bridge. Minister for Infrastructure, you want to take that one?
Yes, so I visited the Moya Bridge in the, the same afternoon after the heavy rains caused the landslides and the damage. So all of the bridges perhaps, except for a few, in our roads are old bridges, all of them. And they need, they susceptible and vulnerable to damage from unexpected or heavier than usual rainfalls or slides, etc. But I think I need to be honest with us because we have to temper expectations about infrastructure. Infrastructure is for something that requires a design. It either has to be designed by an architect or an engineer or a combination of both. And it takes a little while. And then after you design it, you then have to price it. And after you price it, you then have to have bids for contractors to bid. You then have to evaluate the contractors and then you have to award contracts. So when we are talking about main bridges on the main road like Moya, we are talking about major infrastructure work that is going to run into the millions. It is not something that the Ministry, well, first of all, the Ministry of Infrastructure doesn't have the in-house capacity to build the bridges. It may have some capacity to design it, and I'm saying may because in some cases we don't. So it means you have to hire an architect, you have to hire an engineer, they have to actually design based on the circumstances of the area. And after we price that, you then have to tender it and give it to a contractor. In the normal scheme of things, assuming you had the engineers, you had the architects, you had the contractors and you had the financing available, those things will take at least six to 12 months, best case scenario. So we appreciate that in some instances, it's vulnerable, it's risky, but the reality is the reality. Doing major construction and infrastructure work doesn't happen immediately. In some instances, we can do remedial things like parking stones and so on to shore up the bridge, but it will take some time. So the team at the Ministry of Infrastructure is aware of the situation with the Moya Bridge. It's not just Moya, you can, what's the area, Mongsili, that's how you call it? There's Mongsili. I mean, we can go on and on. You can take the entire Grand Etang Road for that matter, right? Because it's, it's significantly dangerous in many instances where the bridges are too small, the bridges have been there for a long time. So I'm just making the point to say, we appreciate that there has to be a comprehensive plan to address the widening in many instances, the reconstruction or the shoreing up of the bridges, but it simply cannot happen overnight. And, and I can, and I'm being honest with you by saying, we can do some remedial work to shore the bridge up now, but the likelihood that we would be able to, if, and I can't answer that question because the engineers will have to, whether the bridge can simply be repaired and it remains safe, or whether we're talking about just simply repair work, or whether we're talking about the fact that you might have to construct an entire new bridge, they will have to, to give the guidance on that. But I've seen the fact that there's been significant erosion, that some of the buildings close to the bridge are actually in danger of, of falling down if the erosion continues. But it requires significant engineering advice, so it will take a little time. I'm saying a little time as in it is not something that can happen in a week or, or two weeks' time. I see you have the mic, so I assume you want to respond.
Thank you. Moya Bridge, of course, is a fairly new bridge on the other side, but if you notice, the bridge, the river used to be much wider. But what has happened over the years is that people kept on dumping things in the river, in the river, so it has narrowed the passage. So my recommendation is that if we can clean up that part of, behind that old bridge, to clear it so that there would be more space for the water to run. I mean, I, I understand you cannot build a bridge immediately. It takes money, time and planning. But if we could just clear the river there, maybe we could allow, you know, the passage to be widened so the water could flow easier and not cause such a big problem.
All right, thank you very much for the suggestion. I will take that back to the engineers. I will ask the Minister of Education to address the plans.
Thank you, Prime Minister. So in relation to the, the Hope Lands, you are correct that the, we did lose that initial project that the University of the West Indies was, had proposed since before we got into office. So that, that was lost to Antigua. However, since we've got back into, into office, we have engaged the now Global Campus. So we've had meetings with the Vice Chancellor, with the Principal of the Global Campus, Dr. Severin, and they are still interested in doing a new type of development in the area. We have not said much about it at this point because it's still embryonic and the time span that the university is talking about is not a time span that, that would excite you. They're talking about 10 years, I mean, we don't want to hear that. Because in 10 years, we would have gone into office twice and seen nothing happen with it. And so that's not what we interested in hearing. Additionally, they've been seeking to have the lands used as security. So it's still pretty much ours because it was gifted to them for So it's still pretty much ours because it was gifted to them for a specific purpose. Outside of using it for that purpose, properly it ought to be taken back. But we're not going there yet. We are hopeful that we can still realize some good partnership with them. The discussion is still open, but we just want to impress upon them. In fact, we've written to them and talked about the timelines with the hope that we can accelerate a, a better response that could see something happen i- in a more timely manner at the Hope site. So that'll be my response. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Minister. Thank you for your concern. Next.
Good night. Good night to everyone. Particularly established. Uh, my name is Joel Thomas and I'm from South West. Um, I have three, um, like simple suggestions and one question. Shouldn't take very long. All right. So, um, coming into Grenada from, uh, last Sunday, I, I noticed that we, we, when, when I came in, I gave my passport to the, the officer, the immigration officer, up to this point, I can't tell you what his voice sounded like. He didn't say hi, he didn't say hello, he didn't say goodbye, he didn't say have a good day. Now, this is not to bash all of them. I mean, the, the process was very smooth and whatever else, but, uh, as coming into the country, as for, as a first point of contact, notice the first impression is the last impression. So that might be a good thing to get, uh, our immigration officers and whatever to greet the people and wish them well. That's the first one. Secondly, uh, one time I came in, there were two planes, uh, JetBlue American Airlines. I stood at the wrong carousel for like about 20, 25 minutes. That could be easily solved by just having a sign that says American Airlines, JetBlue. Easy, simple solve. A paper sign, no, no electronic thing. Easy solve. Third one, I think that one has been dealt with, uh, the landing form that you have to fill out on the plane. Yeah, I nearly gets, I nearly, well, I nearly say seasick, but air sick, filling out a form because there was some turbulence and like, I had to close my mouth for a while. All right. So that's it, that's the three, three suggestions I think we should, it's 2024, we shouldn't be filling out land, uh, landing forms on, like paper. All right. And then the question I have, uh, has to do with Project 500. Uh, I'd like an update on that please, and, uh, as in regards to who qualifies and when the start date, uh, is expected. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your question.
Yep, yeah, yeah. All right. So thank you for the suggestions. We all agree that, um, when you land at the airport, you should be made to feel at home. And, um, customer service is one of the things that, um, I think all government departments have to work on in terms of our interaction with the, with the public. So your comments are, are noted. And yes, we are working to try and get rid of the paper ID cards. It requires some changes in the law as well. Um, we hope that by the end of this year, we could be well advanced to having that matter, um, dealt with. So we are going to certainly work on this. I will speak to the GTA Board of Tourism, Immigration Department to ensure that we can enhance the airport's authority, the citizens' experience when they get to the airport. Because we don't just need improvement in physical infrastructure, but we also need improvement in customer service. Project 500, um, I'm not sure if you came in late, but Minister Thomas had, uh, done a, a synop- a synopsis of where we are with the project. So the summary is we are trying to build newer, cheaper homes. But we need to test that the contractors that we are working with or that we want to work with can actually do so. So there's a site in Dunfermline. There's 17 lots. We are going to ask, I think it's between six and eight of the contractors to build model homes on the lots. The construction should start in September and should last for three months. The contractors, are contractors who are from within the region. They've all indicated that they can build the homes at certain price points, that they can have these homes assembled at certain price points, and that they would build using new modern technology, all aimed at driving the price of the homes down. But we can't buy cotton bag. So we are going to give them the opportunity to prove that we can do so. After they have done so, we will then know which homes actually come in at what price and at what timeline. And that will then give us the opportunity with public feedback to be able to say of the several models, it is better if we use these three or four models because they're coming out on, on time and they're coming at the right price point. Project 500 is intended to include government land where we can subdivide the land and build on it. It's also intended to include persons who may have their own private lots and just want their homes built on it. And then it's also intended to work with private persons who may have larger lots and are prepared to make its part of Project 500 and divide it so that we can build homes on it and work with them to help them with it. So at this point in time, I can't give you a price point for the homes because it actually depends on the pilot that we will be running to see what price point the homes actually come in. So a more formal launch of Project 500 is expected in three weeks' time. Um, you will get a lot more information, uh, from the Housing Authority and the committee dealing with Project 500. And when that happens, obviously, there'll be a lot more information, a lot more detail. You would see, uh, 3D models of what the homes look like, um, where the site is in, in Dunfermline, and then obviously the infrastructure work would be done, the homes would be constructed, and then it would put us in a position to know the price point. In order to get so many homes built in a short space of time, we are not talking about traditional construction of homes. We are talking about essentially pre-manufactured homes that will then be assembled. That is the only way in which you can construct hundreds of homes within a short space of time. And, and the only way you can drive costs down is by having them pre-manufactured. It's not the traditional block and mortar type kind of homes, or you will never ever drive the price, the price point down. Because I think we all know right now, the average two-bedroom concrete home in Grenada is anywhere from $300,000, $500,000. That isn't going to drive the price of, of the homes down. So I hope I've given a sufficient update as to where we are.
Thank you. Next question, we will, we have four more residents, so you can go ahead, sir.
Good night to the Prime Minister and the rest of the ministers on the table. My name is Charles Lewis. I live at Telescope. And I will shift the momentum a little bit. I want to talk a little bit about disability. Mr. Prime Minister, over two years now, I have a son is in the audience. When I finish here, you're going to see a little demo too, right? I went to the seed office, a lady came a couple of times, take notes, and nothing has been done. I go to the minister, I've been neglected. Well, Mr. Thomas sitting near to you, she went at, at the same home too, she know what I'm talking about. So I, I met you last night for the first time, Mr. Prime Minister, at Ford. I don't know if you remember that. He was leaving, and I told you, uh, uh, first time I meet you in the flesh, I will come here tonight. And I brought my son here just when I done here, I will take him out, he's sitting right here, you will see what I'm talking about, Mr. Prime Minister. And if we talking, talk about, talk the talk and walk the walk, I just find it's over time now for my son to be in role on the program. He cannot work, he was working at call center two years ago, based on the, the sickness he had, they have to send him home. He has a little daughter, five years old, she going to Telescope Primary School. I am not working, sir. I'm a retiree. I'm getting $377 when he want from NIS, and if you have five Mondays, I get $472. My son $150, I just to buy food. And Mr. Prime Minister, I just feel it's time. After two years now, I see people who inherit, I don't have nothing against nobody, strong people working, inheriting from that program. My son cannot even work, I'll show you a little demo just now when I done, Mr. Prime Minister. I just find it's time. Now, I'm quite come here tonight to see you, uh, uh, for you to see with your eyes, Mr. Prime Minister. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your question. I think the, um, Minister will respond. So we will take your, your, your information to give some assistance. So we'll take the next question.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, we will, Minister Thomas has indicated to me that in fact, she did visit your home, that instructions, she said it was about six weeks ago. All right. Well, if you, well, no, 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 but I'm not, I'm not, but, but hold on, hold on, hold on. There are a couple of things. I completely understand and appreciate your frustration. But we also have to appreciate that there are things like processes. The seed officers have to do their job. Minister Thomas said she would have instructed them to do the necessary application to make sure that it's processed. You've obviously come, you've made the point. I'm sure she will double check to ensure that it happens. But I also want to make the point because you, you, you seem to be very specific that it's two years now. So I don't know if it is that your son's disability started two years now, or if it was something that was ongoing before. Right? So it's, so it's two years now. But I, but I also want to make the point because sometimes we act for, uh, a, a particular thing and there might be other solutions to it. Right? So I'm saying everybody knows seed, so everybody thinks seed is the solution for every, every challenge that we, we have, and it may not be seed. So that is why sometimes we have to sit down and talk in a private manner where we're less emotional and be able to actually ask what are the needs that you have? No, that's fine. I understand. What are the needs so that we can actually adequately address it? Because you're saying he also has a child, yes? You're saying he has a son? A daughter, right? Right. So, so that's the point I'm making, that I'm saying seed may not be the only way to address the challenges that he's facing. So I'm sure we'll have a further conversation with Minister about it to see how we can help better. Yep? Okay.
Good night to the Honorable Prime Minister and Ministers and everyone in house. Um, my question, or questions rather, are on the matter of education. Firstly, the issue with the processes of universal education that the government intends to, um, make a reality for Grenadians. I want to know about the guarantees that government have for secondary school teachers who might be overwhelmed or who are not, who are not trained for, because they're expecting students at a certain level when you come into secondary school education. And if it is that regardless of whether or not, as how I interpret it, whether or not you pass CPA, you're not at that level and no teachers have to be stressed and overwhelmed, that they may, they may not have the training and capabilities. So I want to know what avenues, what training programs are in place for the teachers so that they don't feel overwhelmed, as well as what is going on in the foundation level to spot and curb problems that dislike dyslexia or certain learning disabilities that may be present that we Grenadians are not cultured to notice because it's not something that we talk about. We don't really cater learning disabilities. We just think, oh, well, they done, so whatever, and we just dismiss it. So I want to know about what implements, implementations are there for early childhood in education. The second question is on, as it relates to incentives for students who want to pursue higher education, um, we know of the problem of brain drain that Grenada faces whereby students at their own expense may, or people at their own expense may want to, uh, specialize in certain fields, and it takes money, they may take loans, and then when they come back to Grenada, there's not really the incentive for them to pursue that career here. It might be very, uh, essential in Grenada, but the monetary, uh, incentive is not there and they have debts to pay off or whatnot. So they tend to gravitate to the wider world that could facilitate their ambition. So what programs and measures does government have, uh, to curb that problem of being brain drain and give incentives to people who might otherwise want to further their education? Thank you very much. Good night.
So thank you very much for your questions. In relation to the issue of teacher training and teacher frustration over, um, the policy for universal secondary education. We continue to train teachers. In fact, as we speak, there are two batches of teachers currently being enrolled for training to become qualified teachers at the TMRU Community College. It, it's a program, a teacher education training program that's done jointly with the Board of Education, uh, of the University of the West Indies Kville Campus. So that is ongoing because we want to make sure all of our teachers are well-trained and training allows them to be better equipped with classroom management skills and strategies, uh, being able, having some of this educational psychology and developmental psychology, uh, skill sets that are required to treat with those groupings. So we continue to train them. Apart from that, we are also, um, for those students who transition into secondary schools, we have support. So the Curriculum Department at the Ministry of Education for the last two years since we've done this. Is it two? That was last year. Yeah. So they have been working with the students who are on the lower end, providing support for those students, using the qualification and expertise of, in some cases, retired teachers. We've had policemen, we've had counselors, all of these people have come together to be able to provide a body of support for those students. And in some cases, the personal development necessary, in some cases, the, uh, literacy skills or the numeracy skills, they've all been treated with. All of those things we hope, um, can better support those students as they move on in this process of, uh, universal secondary education. Now, I want to pause it here, that while people might, while we might have a perspective that says, let's make them ready. I have spent all my life in education. I started teaching when I was 19. And I spent all my years in education. And if we think of the other policy, when we wait for them to pass and we wait for them quite a significant number of the times, there is absolutely no other real support program. But we are ensuring that as we push them forward and take away all the stigmas, we have those kinds of support. You asked about what we're doing at the earlier levels. I mentioned in my presentation that early childhood education and development is a critical part of our focus in the Ministry of Education. I want to see us get to a place ultimately where we have our best trained and most highly qualified teachers teach at the early childhood level. Because that's where we shape them, that's where we form them. So that's coming eventually. But for now, we have expanded the offerings, the services offered. In the early childhood department, we've hired new officers, so we have a stronger cohort of officers. The same can be said for special education. We have Dr. Ald, who heads the department now, and we've hired a number of other special education officers to ensure that we have a stronger suite of services that's offered to our special, uh, needs population. So the early identification and all of these things can be better looked after with the stronger cadre of officers that we have at the ministry. Additionally, we've recently signed this agreement with Cuba and through the early, the, um, special needs department, we will engage Cuba to see what degrees of support we can get because they have, uh, excelled in treating with, uh, special needs populations. Your second question, sir, spoke about incentives for persons with higher education and for higher education. Well, for one, in terms of salaries, I think we are moving in the direction of improving salaries, but that cannot be, um, improved in isolation of other parts of the economy and our productive sectors. All of the economy must grow to be able to raise salaries at the end. But clearly, this government has articulated and shown that we are committed, we are, we are honoring the increases. In fact, I don't know if you saw the publication where they talked about, um, teachers in Grenada are getting higher pay than oil rich Guyana. I don't know if you saw that publication as to all of the real details of it. But, so that's working. But let me say though, we are working to ensure that most students can get an opportunity to higher education. There's a 90% subsidy on tuition at the St. George's University, part of the agreement the government has with St. George's University. There's an 80% reduction on tuition for all students who get admitted to the campuses for all students who get admitted to the campuses of the University of the West Indies in the regional campuses. So you'd only have to worry about twenty percent. And all these are costs that the government bears if you go to those colleges. Currently, we are working on other agreements with other universities. We've collaborated with some of the universities, Dr. Randy Glean and some of his universities in the United States, Illinois, Midwestern, and some of those universities we are working with. Currently, we are developing a memorandum, we are soon to sign a memorandum of understanding with Monroe College to give first-generation university students the opportunity to start studies. So from this end, the government's end, we are doing all that we can to support our plan to see at least one university graduate in every household. And we'll continue to work, yes? We'll continue to work hard to support this policy position. And hopefully, we can instill in our students the need to be patriotic to return and serve. And if they can't return because they find other opportunities, they can still come back in some form or other. We are looking at that too at the Ministry of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister. I see three more, and a hand waving at me at the back. So we're gonna try to wrap up with these in line. So you may proceed with your question.
Thank you very much. Protocol established, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. People at the head table, especially our Prime Minister, thank you for the opportunity to come back and engage you on your second year as Head of this Administration. Now, I'll make a few comments and perhaps one or two suggestions. Because I know the challenge for us in Grenada as a people is very tough. And for the government to manage with what I would refer to as limited financial resources in contrast or in comparison to the demands made by, made by the citizen is a overwhelming task. And a series and backdrop of the period two thousand and five and two thousand and twenty-three, when you are getting office, we as a people post-Ivan, our behavior has caused a lot of predicament. So these predicament knows are challenges before us. And when the mention on the podium of we parents and guardians and adults, that was not a simple statement. And we must acknowledge that. Now, let me get to, let me put things in perspective. Because sometimes we don't see where we're going until we knock our feet, and then we say, oh, y'all are stump, oh, y'all are big stone. We must be in perspective. If we need resources, we have to look for it or we have to work for it. Does Grenada a poor country? The answer is no. What is the problem then? A lazy bunch of people. That is why pretty alimony is so high. And now, we have gone violence. And they kept everything off, violence against women and girls.
All right.
So we must, we must city productivity. Anyway, I come into the point.
Right, in the interest.
Yeah, no, I come into it, I come into it. Having the privilege, having the privilege to be among the World Bank, the FAO, UNTEAD, International Trade Center, EU, and others. It showed me the blunders that we make as a people. So in simple, we did not make any significant economic recovery after Ivan. It was mentioned on the podium there that we just two percent pre-Ivan. So what we do all the years, that's a question we have to answer. Now, I was deep, I was deep in agriculture, very deep in agriculture.
All right, sir, can you?
But I have to get out because I have to find resources to give my children a foundation for the future to let them go, they are all professionals. What I'm going to tell you now, if we are got resources, we have to look now in within. And the immediate is where we can generate foreign exchange from our local goods, products, and services. The first two.
Thank you.
The first two in that is nutmeg and cocoa.
All right, thank you so much. In the interest of time, we wanna.
Yes, one, yeah, just a minute.
Just jump to the next question.
Yes. Five seconds. Mister, Mister Minister of Education.
All right, let's be respectful.
Mister Minister of Education, GCNA have an ordinance. And every delegate, put them in Tom C seat, and let them be knowledgeable of the ordinance that guides them and manage them. The second one is GCN do the same thing. So you begin to breed a new kind of people with a psyche to properly manage these entity. So we're going to have foreign exchange. Now, that is only part one of it. Look at the, look at the, um. Look at, look at the poultry. Look at the poultry, millions of dollars spent in the poultry, importing poultry. You have Caravan Arrows, and you have people are distributing. Why don't we pull them together, give them a mandate, and let we come up with something tangible for the poultry sector?
All right.
That is only, that is only a tip of the iceberg. This is the thing we must focus on.
All right, thank you, sir. Would any of the ministers like to respond? All right, thank you so much. We do understand that Grenville, it is the big parish, you have big ideas, and we thank you for coming out, thank you for your suggestion and your comments this evening. We'll take the next question, please.
Good night, everyone, including the head table. My name is Michael Nichols, I will try to make it as short as possible. Mister Minister, I get to realize that we are following the same footsteps in agriculture, like, like Diablo. I want to call people names, if you know what I mean, you know. The, the, the bottom line is that we're fixing road, um, roads near to homes and the farm roads. There are about fifty-two farm roads right now, because I've visited them, and nothing so far is yet done to them, and the rainy season is going to come in very soon. I, I suggest that coming to the, in good in the future, every constituency should have at least a front-end load and a couple other small equipments with a two chucks that could do the simple remedial work like backfilling and draining, so that farmers could access the farm easily before the heavy rain. That should be a kind of annual thing. I understand from the, the minister that he's saying that they haven't got an engineer, a young engineer that could help start the work. But I know farmers are grumbling, I, I work with GCNA, although I'm a farmer myself, and I always in the field, and I could tell you farmers are very modest granted about roads. If our GDP must grow, we must farm better, and we must have good roads. I heard somebody mention, mention about concession, Mister Prime Minister, you never told them that we have access now to cheaper vehicles, so we can buy a hybrid vehicle. I could just give you an example, if you want to grow your lettuce and your tomato and thing, you could buy a hybrid vehicle, it will cost you about thirty grand. And that will be at twenty fifteen. And that could take you to town and your family and everything together, keep it cool and so forth. So the government has made it a little bit easier now for vehicle than before. So we must commend them about that. We must take advantage of those situations when they come. I, I, I would have liked to mention somewhere a serious problem that the farming, farming community have, but I'll just allow somebody else to say something. I think you should engage the farming community, Alex, most special by itself when you have in symposium rather than in general, because a lot of people want to come here and open the conscience and talk about things that I think we can't handle here. But, so you should engage the farmers, I mean, in a more separate capacity so that you really understand. Because I believe everybody on the head table should understand the farming situation. We shouldn't have to wait until the minister be here for you all to understand, because I know almost everybody on the table and you all pass in farming areas, so you all should know the pains. I am not taking that as an excuse, the minister not here, so that is why I can't hear you. We in Grenada must do that as a team. So if the minister not around, we all must able to do it together, thank you.
Indeed, thank you. And we understand and we are taking notes, we're gonna have some more, um, farmers, farmers and engagement for farmers. Somebody also talked about the poultry farmers, so we will engage you in separate symposium and forum like this. All right, so next question, and then we have two more. And we will wrap up for this evening. And please keep it tight, make sure the questions are, you can consolidate your questions and give us the backstory, just the questions.
All right, good night, Honourable Prime Minister and the other members of the panel. My two questions are in relation to aviation, right? Aviation as it comes to Grenada, right? First of all, I remember a few years ago that the previous administration had a supposed launch of a, of a flight school project or whatever in Pools, that they said they had this ribbon-cutting ceremony and everything. Since then, I have not heard anything about that. So I just want to know, because I am someone who is very interested in aviation, I'm very passionate about that, right? And also, along those lines, are there any plans for increasing or adding aviation scholarships for persons who may want to pursue that career? Because you also, you always get scholarships for lawyers and doctors and all of these things, but the fields that are not heavily attended or heavily, people are not very much interested in, there are persons who are interested but cannot maybe provide, you know, for their own tuition and so. So I'm wondering if there are any provisions made for scholarships for aviation in Grenada, for Grenadians. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, I'll address the second question first. We've been working with our international partners to get scholarships in the field of aviation. The Qataris government has agreed to in fact offer, I think, two scholarships to Grenada when we visited last year. The Ministry of Civil Aviation and the Airport Authority are working on identifying the particular area. But I should also point out that the Airport Authority itself launched earlier this year an outreach program to start sensitizing Grenadians about the careers in aviation, civil aviation and airports. I'm not sure if you might have seen it, but they've actually started going to schools to sensitize students about the numerous jobs that exist in the field of civil aviation, from meteorology to air traffic controllers, to airport management, et cetera, et cetera. So, in fact, in, in the case of Grenada and the Caribbean, there's a significant shortage of air traffic controllers in the Caribbean, and that includes us at the airport in Grenada. So it depends, I'm not sure which area in aviation you're interested in, it could be anything from being a pilot to any number of other fields, but there are certainly opportunities in the aviation industry. As it stands now, the Minister of Education is here, so he may be able to see. I'm not aware that there's any specific domestic scholarship for aviation, because to study aviation, almost any field, you'd have to leave the island. And so that's why you'd have to have a partnership with a, a, a university outside of Grenada to be able to get the kind of qualifications that is required. But even in terms of short-term courses and so on with the Chinese governments, Chinese government, they're bilateral trading courses in some of those areas like meteorology that we get from, from time to time. So yes, there are opportunities, I would say, you probably would need to contact the scholarship desk at the Ministry of Education to be able to find out what those opportunities are.
All right.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll take the last two questions.
Good night, my name is Yasan Gilbert, I'm living in Subies. Prime Minister, Prime Minister, it's a pleasure to meet you. Yesterday, I was so tired, I could not have come in forward, but it's my pleasure to say good night to our loving Prime Minister, Honourable Deacon Mitchell, and all the ministers. I just come from a hard day's work, and I was just, I heard there's a meeting, so I am so pleasure and glad to be here to say good night to every one of you. I don't have no question, I don't want to say nothing. And my loving Prime Minister, I'm doing a little kitchen garden right in Subies, and there's a young lady that living upstairs, I can't get to eat my produce in peace. I tired going to the ministry and reporting, going to the station and make a report concerning, right now at the back of my backyard, our backyard is so, it's a pool, okay? Everything I tried to plant, forget to eat and share, I cannot do that. And I'm so upset about it. I'm really upset. I have two nice lime tree in the back, I can't get to grip the lime, but at least it's there, and I planted, I don't mind people picking some of it, but at least it could show some in my veranda for me. I can't even get to sell none of my limes. Thank you, Prime Minister, and all the loving members of parliament, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you for your entertaining question and comments. Definitely, I think that's a pretty alimony issue, so if you, um, we could always chat with you at the end of the meeting, but thank you so much for your comments. And our final resident, final question for this evening, you may proceed.
Pleasant good night to everyone, I'm bowling pantry and living Maribor. I do not have a question, but I just want to express my gratitude towards the transformation team. The Bible say in all things give thanks, so I want to thank, say a very heartfelt thank you for the transformation that has, I have seen happen in Maribor. I can just name a few. We have the car park at the hospital, so when you come to look, look after your sick or your loved ones, you have a safe park where you can pack your vehicle. I've seen that there have been three, they have built three new houses for the less fortunate. I saw that Sister Delbert spoke about the poles, they are lining the path here, ready to put up, and I know that that will create a great impact for the youths in Maribor. Two new roads have been built. One is not completely, completely competed as yet. However, I've been living where I am living for more than thirty years. I have two adult children. I used to carry them on my back to bring them out to go to school. I used to put two black plastic in my feet to go out to go to work. I used to put two black plastic in my feet to go out to go to work, but I have a little granny now, I carry on the back still, but it wouldn't be for long, because they have a little piece to complete, and I can assure you that have patience, they have come and measure it already. So I believe that before the rainy season really start, that road will be complete.
Thank you so much.
Kudos to Senator Gloria Thomas, and continue, Prime Minister, to ask God for wisdom, and remember that we've gone, all things are possible.
Thank you so much. And on that note, I'd like to close off the question and answer segment. I want to say special thanks to all the residents of this constituent, well, not constituency, but this parish for coming out this evening. Indeed, we've had a very, very, well, I want to say entertaining, but informative, informative session this evening, and we look forward to two or two more tongue hall meetings. The next one will be in Karakoo on Wednesday, and the final one will be in the northeast at Boca Secondary School. So I'd like to at this time, thank you once again, and if the Prime Minister or any member of the team has closing comments, please do so at this time.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out at the first working day of the week, and so we appreciate it's nine, it's ten thirty. We certainly appreciate that you could have chosen to spend your time elsewhere, but you chose to be here, so we fully appreciate it. I want to assure the farmers, the poultry farmers, that we've heard you, and that we will certainly take the necessary steps to engage on a deeper level to you, to see how we can, in many instances, shorten the timeframe in addressing some of the concerns that you've raised, as well as taking on both some of the suggestions, to address things like the farm roads, to address the poultry situation, and to address things like getting the farmers to work closer together. Because at the end of the day, St. Andrews has always been known as the breadbasket, and we want to ensure that it continues to be known that way. So thank you very much. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Chloe Noel, if you're still with us, please see us on the stage. Chloe Noel, and if you have any questions, the ministers may entertain those, but otherwise, we wish you a pleasant evening.